Good evening, everyone, to Greenwood City Council meeting on this Monday, March the 4th, 2024, at 7:04 PM. Ms. Berry, would you call the robe, please?
Yes, Casey Brown.
Here.
Rob Baker.
Here.
Ms. Terry.
Here.
Roger Raymarch.
Here.
Daniel McDaniel is absent. Rob Powell is absent. That we have four.
Thank you. If everyone will please stand, we'll begin the season's meeting with a prayer by Pastor Newton from the Nazary Church, and Paul Godwin from Chief of Prayer.
Could pray with me. Officer Hobbs has requested special prayer for Kristen Falkenberry. She's been some doctors and they're trying to figure out some things that are going on. And so we specifically want to pray for her. Can you pray with me? God, we do thank you. Thank you for the way you work in our lives, and we pray that you would be in the situation with Kristen. We just pray that you be with the doctors as they're diagnosing and figuring out what's going on and the best path forward. We just pray that your comfort and your guidance would be in the midst of that situation. I pray for the cities, councils, and the officials, the people who serve our community. We pray for your wisdom. We pray for your strength. And sometimes we even pray to give them patience as they seek to serve the city well. Lord, in the meeting, as we look forward and we look at what you're doing and what the city's doing, may be an opportunity for us to celebrate even as we look at the things facing our city. I pray that you would protect and bless our city. And I pray that our city would be a blessing to you, that as we live our lives and we care for each other and look out for each other, that it will be pleasing in your eyes. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May you see it? At this time, I would ask for consideration of approval of the minutes for the January 30th, 2024, Special Call City Council Meeting and the February 5th, 2024, Regulations Council Panel.
I'm going to motion second.
Thank you. We have a motion, second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Raymarch?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Recognizations and acknowledgements. I'd like to recognize and acknowledge. We have a full house tonight. So it's good to see everybody here. Welcome to the City Hall. We'll talk about some other cool things a little bit later, too. So committee reports are on your agenda. We have all those in place. As always, if you have any questions, council or citizens about any of these reports, the Royal Club, S R C A, Parks Commission, or Waste Water Commission, let my office know. Daniel will be glad to answer any questions you have or maybe give you a copy of those reports. And thank you for returning those in. We are at the Citizen Forum section of our agenda, and I have looks like three names that have signed up tonight. So the way this works, if you come to the microphone as I call you, state your name and address for the record, and we can allow you five minutes for you to address the council. So first up is Brian Pritchard. Have I said that right?
Yes, sir. Brian Pritchard, 180, Jennifer Drive, here in Greenwood, Arkansas. And a couple of things. I've lived in the city for about a year and a half, but I feel like I've definitely made it a home. This city reminds me a lot of where I grew up in, which is Cat, Arkansas, 30 years ago. Okay? They had about 9,000 people, church on every street, one highway denying, one right through. Everything was built on it, just like how it's in here. But over time, it grew, and we got really large. There's about 25,000 to 30,000 people that live there now. Huge tax revenue base. City is still as great as it ever was. It's a nice bedroom community for local rock, and I see Greenwood being the bedroom community for Fort Smith. I see a lot of the growth that you would like to bring to the city. Unfortunately, council has always supported you on that. So I've never had an interest in city politics until a recent issue came up, and that really piqued my interest. There was a lobbyist to private club license that was requested. I had no doubt the issue would pass due to overwhelming support of the issue by the citizens of Greenwood. I would hope the majority of aldermen would have kept an eye on the Facebook page, Hey Greenwood, What's Happening? That's mostly citizens do. There was a poll posted by Casey Gray on January 18th that said, Do you support the sale of alcohol in restaurants in Greenwood? There were 929 votes for yes, 150 votes for no, which was an 87% majority for support of alcohol in restaurants. I was shocked with the port to vote and read as much as I could online and watched the entire City Council meeting on YouTube, which was very interesting last month, to say the least. There were several interesting remarks from the minority, and even with overwhelming support from the people in this town, there wasn't a single person who spoke to represent the majority. The people in the city didn't believe they had to show up to voice their opinion. They believed the aldermen would do the right thing and represent them that they should have, lest they learn that did not happen. As Mayor stated, I'd leave the aldermen to vote or know more concerned about the personal agendas than the will of the people. I understand one could be influenced by tragedies involving alcohol in their lives. I understand that one may have walked a mile in the friend's shoes, maybe he'd be wearing his boots today, wanted to honor his legacy in both the way he would have in the past. But you have to represent your current citizens, not the ghosts of the past. I've been doing some research, elected president ordinance prevent this type of travesty from happening in the future. While doing research, I found AC Brown. Oh, sorry. I said, You represent my ward, Ward 3, okay? I don't know you, and you don't know me. This isn't attacking Mr. Brown, but I believe it's due to the growth of the city. I believe the aldermen inform me don't know the majority of their 3300 constituents in the ward. They represent. Why? Under the current voting ordinance, they have to worry about the entire city's opinion instead of the ward's opinion on city matters. In my opinion, based on recent council votes, our people or groups of people have too much influential power to elect our city aldermen who do not even live in the ward due to their current ordinance. I believe they influence our elected aldermen more than the citizens they represent. Our aldermen know the important people in town to receive the proper votes to win an election, but have they ever canvassed their neighborhoods, asked for people's opinions in city matters? Have they even knocked on the door to introduce themselves to their constituents? Maybe they have. I've lived here for two years, but honestly, it hasn't happened to me. If you asked me to pick my tribe of aldermen to represent the ward from the eight people that I stand before, I couldn't do that, and neither can many of my family or friends. This has been allowed to go on due to the fact that citizens of any of the three wards of Greenwood has a right to vote for any councilman in any ward. To limit this unfair reach of power, I believe we should give the representatives' rights back to citizens of each ward and only allow the citizens of the wards they live in to elect the ward's councilman. If the law states that council must live in the ward to represent the ward, why wouldn't it change the ordinance that all the citizens of the ward may elect the representatives? This will be done by a recent law change of 2020, most of you may not be familiar with, but I'd like to recommend the City Council ordinance to do so. As 2020, Arkansas Pro Title 14, Local Government, Sub-Title 3, Municipal Government, Chapter 43, Government of Cities in the First Class Subchapter, Elected City Officials, Elected Council Members by and large or by Ward. It says, "The City Council of any city of a governing body of city, in transition to the mayor council or government, may provide by ordinance that all council members be elected by a ward, in which event each council member shall be voted upon by the qualified electors of the ward from which he or she is a candidate. When some provided the city ordinance, the name of the candidate shall appear upon the ballot only in the ward in which he or she is a candidate." This is not a crazy thought. The Arkansas Senate consists of 35 representatives. Arkansas House has 100 representatives. Even though I'm a citizen of Arkansas, I'm not allowed to vote for any individual that does not represent my district. I can't choose to represent us for Little Rock, so why would the citizens of Greenwood that live in Ward 1 and 2 have the right to choose my representation in Ward 3? I understand this is a very difficult change between the packs of aldermen that have to vote to change it, but be mindful of your vote. A yes vote in this matter will let the people of your ward know that you want to represent the best interests of your neighbors, friends, and people of your ward. A no vote will confirm that you truly represent the powerful people throughout this city, the puppet masters who control your strains. Due to the time restraints placed in the upcoming election, I ask that one of our pristine aldermen motion request to draft a new ordinance for aldermen to be voted by the ward constituents, that the second pristine alderman, second motion for that ordinance, number grand emergency passage for the next removal. Thank you for your time and allow me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. I commend you for that's a lot of information in a short period of time. Thank you very much.
Would you give a copy of it?
I would like a copy. Does the council want to respond at all to Mr. Pritchard's statements tonight? You don't have to, as you know.
Well, I understand that this was an issue that was, I covered over, I think, at least for, you know, for my period. I'm sure we'd have liked your presence down here to state your favor.
Sure. No, I asked Ms. Berry if she could provide me with the ordinance that allowed this to happen for any person in the city, debate with any aldermen. We can't buy them. I mean, it has to go back to the 70s, probably. In this county, they have 2,000 or 3,000 people's population. And at that time, I would understand if you only have 2,000 or 3,000 people, why you want to vote for your city council? But each ward now is larger than 3,000 people as it was back in the 70s. You have basically a very little city in each ward, if you want to look at it that way, as the law was drafted in the 70s. For you to get better to know the people and what they would like you to represent for them, I just think it's a better idea for you to focus in your area than focus on the entire city's thoughts and represent that individual in that area.
I guess I didn't mention myself there. I was talking about the issue of the alcohol. You know, I didn't see you here during that period of time. As we look back for most recovery.
That's exactly. I'm brand new to it. I saw what's happening now. You know, it came up on the Facebook page. It brought my interest and my attention to it. But I just, like I said, I don't understand as aldermen, if you see some of the things of what's happening now, and it's got an 80% approval rate with over 1,000 citizens in the city, how could you vote no in that aspect? It sounds like to me, I mean, not even three or four squeaky people will, it's a will in your ward that spoke to you. There's 3,296 of them.
Well, I look at, I'm sorry, I look at Hey Greenwood is not really a...
What's how we all know what's going on?
You know, Thursday and stuff. And I just find that...
How do you post a poll on your website where your constituents could answer questions? How do you have them to vote?
Right here in this forum, right here.
Well, you have about 40 or 50 people here in the city.
I stopped it. I guess you went to a timer.
And there it is.
I should have wondered about, we have about 37 cities that vote. So there's about 3,000 people in 96 kind of residents. So you're not, you know, I understand, we're trying to get the voting constituents. The whole city should be represented, whether they vote for you, do not vote for you, whether they vote in any election for that matter. You should know what is happening in your ward and how they feel. That's my thought process. Because like I said, you're making an entire decision on 56 people that's in the city. Those people are understanding the pull of strings. Those people have served it for a long time, you know, in that meeting, my fathers, 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 last month said, you know, this is how we should build, this house should be. We have slavery back then. We have prohibition back then. Women couldn't vote back then. What's happened in the past is not how a city should look forward, in my opinion.
Anything further from council? Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. Very much. Thank you. Next on the list is Wade Dunn.
Thank you. My name's Wade Dunn. I live at 2734 Old Chiswick Road. I know it seems like I'm beating a dead horse on this, but some things are worth fighting for. So here is one more. I've been told, for everyone else, I think it's the council party that's what I'm talking about, talking about the gun ordinance that was passed last month. I've been told that the city can't ban hunting. And supposedly, Mr. Baker says Arkansas Game Fish is the only entity that can regulate hunting. But I can't find any act in Arkansas that says the city can't ban hunting. I can't find any act in Arkansas that says Arkansas Game Fish Commission is the only entity that can regulate hunting. I agree that Arkansas Game Fish Commission is the only one that can set dates and set hunts, but I'm quite comfortable in saying that the city can ban hunting. That being said, why didn't we just say no hunting in city parks and trails? But the issue with the ordinance is when you get to public places. It's not the first section, 1.3, it's the second section, 1.4. It says you cannot discharge a firearm to defend your life. It says you can't define, discharge a firearm, period, with only one exception. This is, again, only public places. The first section, where we're talking about citywide, you can discharge a firearm, protect your life. That's at your house, your presence, wherever you are. But in public places, a new complete section, you can't discharge a firearm for any reason without, unless you have, there's one exception to that, and that's written permission from the chief of place. So you've got all these exceptions in the 1.3, but in the next section where it talks about public places, there's only one exception, and that's written permission from the chief of place. I don't care if you copy paste those same exceptions over into the next section, that would work. Or, as I've said all along, just add the language that nothing in this ordinance denies an individual's right to legally carry a firearm for the protection of their life. Effectively, what we've done is disarm people in public places. People's going to read that you can't discharge a firearm in a park, and a lot of people just won't carry. We've seen the result of what happens in gun-free zones with what just happened to Lake and Riley at the University of Georgia. You know, you sit in there, you can't discharge a firearm in parks, trails, sidewalks, schools, and churches. What business does the city have in defining if a person can defend their life in a church? You have no business doing that. So that's wrong. You have no business in schools. State ordinance has already defined that. You have no business in city parks. The state ordinance has already defined that. Section 1.3 has the exceptions, but like I said, only one exception in section 1.4, public places. And that is written permission from the chief of place. I don't think you wrote this ordinance to deny individuals' rights to carry, discharge firearms, protect their life. I do not think that. But I think we've been down this road that, as I told Travis when I talked to him today, I said, It wasn't a bill intended to control firearms. It's just bad work. It needs to be fixed. It's simple to fix it. But if you're not willing to fix it, then I want to change my opinion that you really were trying to ban guns in parks and trails. But you can't ban, you can't ban guns from churches. You can't, you can't do that. You don't have the ability to do that. So either copy the same exceptions out of 1.3 over to 1.4, or add the language, this ordinance does not deny anyone the legal right to carry a firearm. Legal right. There's just no reason why you would not want to do that. So that's where I'm at. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. If you'd like to address this.
Mr. Baker, sure.
Absolutely.
Is it on?
Yeah. So if you read Amendment 35 of the Arkansas State Constitution, it defines the conservation and management solely the purpose of the game of fish, not the city. So cities can't control any or fishing for that matter. The second one is State Code 14-16504, Regulation of Local Unit of Government. So Part B says, "A local unit of government shall not enact any ordinance or regulation pertaining to or regulate any other manner that ownership, transfer, transportation, carry, or possession of firearms, ammunition, or firearms, or components of firearms, except as otherwise provided in state or federal law." Part B goes on to say the provision up above that I just read, that this section does not prevent the enactment of an ordinance regulating or forbidding the unsaid discharge of a firearm. If I remember what we passed last month, the third and final ordinance, the title is an ordinance repealing or placing ordinance 1410, regulating the discharge of firearms, airguns, pellet guns, bows, similar weapons within the corporate city limits of the city of Greenwood. Nowhere in this ordinance does it say anything about ownership or possession. That is covered by state law and Amendment Number 2. Further, by going by the City of Fort Smith's ordinance pertaining to the discharge of firearms, they also say nothing about the ownership or possession of firearms. So our ordinance is very similar to what the City of Fort Smith says. So I think as the ordinance is written, as it was passed, you can carry a firearm by what is stated. That's exactly right. You can't go into Baptist church and target practice. You can carry a firearm there for your personal safety.
So if I'm at, if I'm at church and a bad guy with a gun shows up, according to your ordinance, I can't use mine?
No, according to the ordinance, it says that you can protect yourself.
No, it doesn't. Not in public places defined as churches. Correct me if I'm wrong. Chief Hogg, does the ordinance not say that?
By person, in defense of his life, go or another person.
But you know, it's section 1.4, new section. It's got to have new exceptions because it has one exception. So it's got to have its own exceptions. It must have its own exceptions. You can ask Travis. I think he'll agree with this.
Absolutely. You need to speak on that.
Well, we've spoken, Mr. Travis. Mr. Baker spoke to us. Nothing in this, I'll speak to the people. Nothing in this ordinance prevents you from carrying, possessing, or transferring a weapon. It prevents you from being able to fire a certain weapon. If you need to defend yourself in a park, church, wherever, and here, you can. Nothing can take your inherent right to defend yourself away. This city council can't override the constitution or the constitution of the state law itself. However, it can limit you from shooting a firearm really nearly in a park where our kids play, run, jump. We have cross-country track meets. You can't go to the school and shoot the firearm, but you damn well can defend yourself.
Why won't you define that? Right now, you have it not defined. Right now, you're trying to trick people into thinking that they can't discharge a firearm in a park. No, I'm not. I've had, I've talked to two attorneys.
Okay, well, just give them my opinion. State code is...
Nobody's trying to trick anybody.
No, I know.
Well, you just said it. Did you not just say you were trying to trick people? The ordinance is trying to trick people into not carrying guns in parks and trails. In the January City Council meeting, either Mr. Baker or Mr. Hobbs once said, We don't want people carrying guns in parks and trails.
No, they didn't.
Yes, they did. So it's in the minutes.
Sir, I said, I said, it took out context. What I was referring to, and I put a press release, and I put it in the context that I was speaking of. I was speaking of, we didn't want guns in the parks where our kids play. Other than the fact that we're choosing words, I should have said, I should have said in the context and laid it out. But you two, if we're using words, you two said you don't think that firearms, people that own firearms were smart enough to read through this ordinance. And if you want to speak out of context, we can speak out of that context.
That's not supposed to.
You told me that. On the phone, you said, I don't think they're smart enough to realize that. So you're saying gun owners aren't smart enough to know that they can defend themselves?
I said, The average person is not going to understand. Your language is so loosey-goosey. The average person is not going to say, they're going to read it says, Get in charge of a firearm in park or on trail. So I better not carry it because if I get caught, guess what happens? The police is going to take my weapon.
I'm going to go out on a limb and say those people that carry are not going to do that just because that says that. If they're going to carry...
So my question, my question, why will you not add those same exceptions? I'll be happy to the next section. Why?
Do you want me to read this again, Mr. Dunn?
No, I don't. I want you to answer my question.
A local unit of government shall not enact any ordinance. Can we read that again? A local unit of government shall not act any ordinance or regulation pertaining to or regulate in any other manner that ownership, transfer, transportation, carry, possession of firearm, ammunition, or firearms. The city cannot say that. That's state cover. That's why we're not putting it in there. The ordinance pertains to discharge.
You didn't even write what you could write legally. You didn't write all of what you said. You read it. Does your ordinance say safely discharge a firearm or discharge firearm?
Well, I would hope that discharge would be safe.
You didn't put that in. My question is, why will you not put those exceptions in public places? Why? Why? What is the reason behind not putting that there? There's got to be a reason. I do not know why. The City of Fort Smith still has signs on their parks saying, No firearms allowed. They're playing politics with gangs with rules and regulations. You go to their parks in Fort Smith and there's a sign that says, No firearms allowed. Can't do that according to state code. They're doing it. In my opinion, is if you don't change this and don't add language to clarify that in the second section, you're trying to control people from carrying guns in parks and trails.
Yes, just briefly, Mr. Dunn, thank you. I was out the better part of the week before last. Had the opportunity to visit with you briefly before I was out and then again today. Also had the opportunity to visit with the president of Gun Owners of Arkansas over the weekend briefly and a legal representative for them. If I could, I'd like to have the opportunity to visit with Mr. Baker, Chief Hogg, maybe the mayor as well, maybe have some sort of an answer for you to your question, maybe by next month's meeting, if that would be appropriate.
I just want, I just want to...
I think I've got a good understanding of both sides concerned.
I just wanted to be there. I'm staying. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Next on the list of the public input is Jim Nook.
29 Rich Chris Drive, Jim, we better do it right. I don't really have anything to say, Mr. Mayor. I've dropped all my information except the cover sheet. So I really don't have anything, but I do have a question. What Mr. Dunn talked about, what I find a chief said, he made all the sense in the world, whatever this problem is, can we get it worked out? I mean, I carry, I carry to church. I carry walking down the street. If I go down the sidewalk, am I going to get arrested? Is that what people are saying? Thank you, Travis, for what you're ahead.
If you're interested, that question can be answered.
I'm asking for Travis. Am I allowed to carry? And why I understand this, Ron?
It's my understanding that the city's not making the effort to regulate possession.
And if somebody comes after...
I think it's more of just a wording issue than anything, and we're going to visit about it.
And if somebody comes after one of my kids or grandkids, and I lay them out on the ground, am I going to prison? Believe me, I will do it. In self-defense, how's that?
Man, I'm just having other facts.
I don't, yeah, I put you on the...
We've got a former judge. He might be back soon to hit you.
He knows me too well. Okay. Maybe I was too specific. If I have to defend myself, you know, I know what, you have to go, you know, people have to investigate everything, but it's proven that I had to defend myself. If I go and go to jail, then I follow the laws.
I can't answer that, but I don't think the city intended to infringe on any of your constitutional rights, including your right to self-defense.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Nook. We have one more on the list tonight. It's Deanna Wymer.
Hello. I have a...
If you'll state your name.
Sure. Deanna Wymer, 12615 Burton Lane.
Thank you.
I have a business at 5 South Main and 7 South Main, and I was wanting to know where the road is going to be and how much of the property, if any, may be imminent domain for that road.
It's going to be again where you live.
12615 Burton Lane, D U R T O N.
Burton Lane?
It's Fort Smith, it's a greenwood school district, it's a greenwood district.
I'm not even familiar.
So her office on Main, her office on Main, I believe is what she's...
7 South Main and 5 South Main.
So you're talking about your office?
Correct.
On Main Street?
Correct.
Somebody has to help me.
She's around the corner from Alex's office.
Okay, okay. Wayland's old office. Is that right? Yeah, no, so it wasn't, no, no. I think the answer is going to be a no. Your land should be dealt with or messed with at all. They are the Main Street connection to the bypass. New construction is where the Masonic Lodge sits now, out to the bypass. I did ask the question, R. Dogg, I'm hoping, R. Dogg, we don't know the answer to this yet. They're going to re-overlay or attend to from that point, from the lodge to the light.
Correct.
I'm kind of hoping they do. We haven't got an answer yet. There was at one time, you might have heard a rumor, when we asked for options of saving the Masonic Lodge, the option was Plan B, which turned out to be a horrible option, was to take Bill Walters' or I'm sorry, Farmers Bank owned, my candy's office, the front of it, the front of Mavericks, the front of the building you're in, and the next one, in the house. All of those was going to be partially... the next one in the house. All of those was gonna be, uh, partially removed and, and part of the parking lot of the county courthouse.
Okay.
Uh, but that's not happening.
That's wrong.
So, yes, ma'am. I hope that's, that's the best news I got.
Correct.
If anything changes, or they, or they decide to even overlay that, we'll try to let you know, because that could certainly interfere with your business or your parking a little bit, but I don't even know that yet.
Well, I'm assuming there would be another one without.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, I couldn't get my head around where you were, sir. Sorry. I've only lived here my whole life. Thank you. That's all we have signed up for the, for this portion of the meeting this evening. Did you get it right there?
Not real good.
I'm sorry. One more time. Was it one-six-two-five?
One-two-six-one-five, B U R T O N, Lane, uh, Burton.
Thank you. Okay, moving on in our, on our agenda, the next is the financial report, Mr. Marsh.
I'm from city of Fort Smith. I knew you might.
You mean your address.
Yeah, I know you do. Look it up.
Good luck with the electronics tonight.
Probably all students here. I was gonna try to use the monitor. Nothing is working. No, I got it. Thank you. I appreciate that. I can't afford it. So your Fort Smith Finance Department had a, um, had a finance, uh, kind of an update of what happened in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Some of this information was given to or provided to the mayor as far as consideration for what the end result of twenty-three was. The city experienced an operating loss for twenty-twenty-three fiscal year of five-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars, which reflects a decrease in operational income of a hundred and twenty-two percent from the previous fiscal year. Now, remember, primary reasons for this, one, we budgeted, uh, some spending that hadn't happened in the previous few years, so we amassed a larger amount of fund balance. So when you looked at the revenue stream and expenses that were being spent, you were looking at, we were spending some of our fund balance, and you'll see that in the next, um, caveat, cash funds, twenty-twenty-three. But we also experienced a significant increase in material supplies, capital, equipment, chemical costs related to the operations of the city as well. So that's kind of where and why the city experienced that loss for the year. Uh, the cash funds dropped, uh, seven-hundred-thousand dollars from the previous year balance. We actually had budgeted that to drop much more significantly than that. That sixteen million that you're looking at was actually an increase from where we had anticipated being due to the fact that there was some, uh, some work that had been pushed off into twenty-twenty-four, so you'll see that shortly. As far as the budget statistics, this is a banner here. As far as our budget is concerned, it's twenty-five point six million dollars. That is, if anybody asks what's the city of Greenwood's twenty-twenty-four budget, it's twenty-five point six million. It's made up of twelve million. We have separated our, um, for this year, our operating budget from our capital budget. So now you have a comparison. We have a twelve-million-dollar operating budget and a thirteen-point-six-million-dollar capital spending budget. The budget, uh, capital expense consists of nine-point-six-seven million of new capital spending and three-point-nine-three million of expense carried over from projects that were delayed or postponed in twenty-three, which I alluded to just shortly ago. Approximately fifty-three-point-one percent of our budget this year is capital related. So that's infrastructure needs and so forth. The majority of that expense is being invested in the water sewer. And you probably knew that because there was a great study done as well, and all the projects were laid out on the table, and that's where most of this expense is gonna be. We have a lot also spent, or at least projected to be spent, in the street department as well. Um, I wanna get to the key financial data for you. You have this in your report. City sales and use tax budgeted growth for both city and county tax was four-point-five percent. The budget is based on that revenue stream. The cumulative year-to-date growth was in city sales tax. It was point-six-eight percent decline. So right now, we're below our budget by, we're, we're missing our budget by five-point-one-eight percent. Um, county sales tax faired a little bit better in the month of February. Uh, cumulative, we're up point-seventeen-eight. County went up two-point-one-five percent February over February. The cumulative growth of budget is still a negative three-point-seven-two percent from where we had, our budget was projected. We're missing our budget by two-point-seven-two percent. Advertising, we'll go back to advertising and promotion. It looks like advertising and promotion tax revenues are way up, or looks like three-point-three-six percent. However, there was an anomaly that occurred in February. We had two, uh, payments that were made for twenty-twenty-three's delinquent, uh, A and P tax revenues from a rather significant contributor to the A and P tax. When you remove that anomaly, those two payments that hit in twenty-twenty-four that were for delinquent twenty-twenty-three taxes, that adjusted would be only a three-point-five-three percent when you look at a standalone twenty-twenty-four's uh, first period, which is a one-point-four-seven percent decline in twenty-twenty-four's revenue stream. I had to put that there because it would have led, it would have led you to a little bit of a misnomer about what their actual percentage increase was. So, as far as our city sales and use tax, I gave you this chart in the city's financial state of the city's speech back in January. I have added to this, this might work, I don't know. Yeah, right there. I added to this the cumulative January and February, as you see there. If you look down at the bottom, you'll see the cumulative is negative point-six-eight, but if you go up to the very top, you'll see that February's, February over February declined two-point-oh-seven percent. Now, if you take that point-eight-seven percent that we were in January as an increase, still way below our budget, this is the lowest that we had in the previous years since two thousand seventeen. If you go to our lowest per point in February, year-over-year cumulative of two-point-two-four, we ended up the year at two-point-seven percent. I don't think we're gonna be achieving the four-point-five percent at that current spend rate right now. It's imperative, that what this is basically saying, these are dollars that are spent inside the city of Greenwood and we have. So we need a, we need a pretty good spend from here on out, and I will share that with you on this slide. The sales tax revenue was, um, in order to meet the projected four-point-five percent growth in city sales and use tax for the current fiscal year, our collections need to average three-hundred-and-six-thousand-seven-hundred dollars per month for the remainder of the year. And that's basically saying we have to average five-point-seven-six percent over the next ten months. That's the average that we have to in order to meet four-point-five. Now, you know you have a fiscal or a financial, um, review that'll occur in April for the first quarter. That, at that point, we have to start looking at whether we're gonna revise some of our revenue projections based on what the three-month trend is and other economic factors that are going on. But I will point one thing out. The next ten months is what I say on there has to average five-point-seven. You know that the collections begin in February, we're, we're December's sales, because it takes two months for that to flow through to the city. So two months of that ten months are already done. They're in the books. All we're doing is waiting on the revenue to come in. We don't know what those numbers are yet. We'll know them in March, and we'll know them in April. So you really have only, starting with March's sales, that's eight months worth of what we can project now. We're looking at only eight months of the year is gonna influence what we do and whether we need our budget. So just keep that in mind. Even though I say ten months, we need to see what that's doing over the next eight months, because that's where we're gonna have to, uh, make sure people shop well. As far as the county sales tax is concerned, two-point-one-five percent was the actual for, uh, our month-over-month, February over February of a year ago. We started at a point seventy-six percent, or less than one percent negative. We're at now positive point-seventeen percent. Still, that is way below where we need to be. Um, I'm not necessarily optimistic about the four-point-five percent. I'm a little, um, right now leaning towards the fact that we were gonna, we're gonna have to revise some of those revenue projections and then take into consideration what needs to be done from the expense side as well. Um, the statement here says that the amount of money that we would have to average is two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-six-hundred dollars for the month for the remainder of the year. That's per month. This would mean an average increase of a five-point-five-one percent for the county over the next ten months going forward. We'll talk more about this. I'm gonna give you this, what's called a, uh, it's the sales tax report. Every month, you're gonna get that. I sent it to you ahead of time this time for you to look over it and at least see, so it wouldn't be a total surprise for you about where we're trending. And as far as our cash flow is concerned, it's down. We had a decrease in cash for the month of February of two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand. Our decrease for the year so far is two-hundred-and-twenty. Our cash fund balance is fifteen-point-eight million, and that is a decrease of our cash balance one-point-three-seven percent. We budgeted a decrease if everything happened and no financing occurred. We would be at a decrease of sixteen-point-nine, twenty-nine-five percent, and our fund balance all in with the city would be close to one-eight million. That's not gonna happen. We are gonna be watching that. Most of that is capital-driven. We usually only average less than fifty percent. Actually, it's less than forty percent of our capital spend year-over-year for various reasons. Now, I know it's on your agenda to watch that, and I gave you a report that is in your packet right now of exactly every department's capital projects and what their current spend is. So we're gonna be looking at that in detail when we do our meeting in April. Uh, it's much more imperative that we do that. I have met with two bond companies, uh, as far as financing is concerned, and talked about some strategies. I just retrieved Stevens's report, and, um, I'll be looking at that. We'll get back with them in the morning as far as going over some questions that I may have. But we're looking at financing a large percentage, and timing is the key for the water sewer departments, uh, projects that are on the books. If we were to finance, let's say, seven million dollars, that would be, uh, significantly, uh, increasing the amount of money that would be in our fund balance coffers for the rest of the city, uh, because they're the ones that are completing most of that. As far as our capital expense is concerned, so far, we spent three-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand of a thirteen-point-six-million-dollar capital budget. That's two-point-three-four percent. So there's, uh, a lot of projects that are still just starting and or, uh, the costs have not flowed through yet. As far as our capital is concerned, this, you have this, you will report here, it's the detail of the budget by department. And you'll see down at the bottom, the one-point-four million comes in the way of capital expense being the tangible property. Capital improvements is twelve-point-two, uh, million. That's how it breaks out into your thirteen-point-six. You'll see the carryover down there. There's about half a million carryover in the capital expense for, uh, the line items, and then three-point-three million of capital, uh, majority of that is in the water sewer department, uh, coming through on the, um, capital improvement side. This would be a copy of the report. I know it's very small, and most of you can't necessarily read it, but you have the report in your packet showing, this is just a summary. It shows what the amount budgeted was, what January spend was, what February spend was, and what's remained. There has been a completed project similar to the retrofit, the, let's go to the, um, upgrade of the audio visual labor. You see that we saved a hundred-and-thirty-one, uh, dollars, let's say, on what was budgeted. Amount of money that would pay any less. So you can see exactly where each line item is because we used this five-line item. And that, uh, gives you an example of the same report for the capital improvement projects. What they've currently done, what has not been done, and what's a carryover by. And that is it.
You talked about this being the, uh, lowest in the last six years, seven years. You go right down there. Is it just coincidence that it's happened only here that we split out our capital budget and our regular budget?
God, it's nothing to do with the sales tax revenue stream. That, that's what we, the capital expense that, uh, is city sales and use tax goes mostly to capital expenditures. The city sales and use tax fund most of those projects. The county's sales tax, though, is funding most of the general departments populated, uh, police, fire, animal, I think I was putting him there on that report. Um, county says down at the bottom, the city shift, county-wide tax goes for general fund budget. A portion, a large portion goes to police, fire, animal control planning, and parts operations, but of others, with non-site services provided by the citizens, provided by the city to the citizens, such as the Boys and Girls Club, they, they get funded through the county sales tax, fifty-one-thousand a year. So a lot of services, a lot of things that would be necessary to operate the city departments come from that county sales tax.
Is some of the expense were, uh, we could go out and kind of, you know, uh, buy equipment, you know, you know, that's already been approved, but no, the, we spend for that, you know, line rule is there? Is that some of this, I mean, that the, or what's called?
Actually, not a lot of capital expenditures for the, for the one-point-four million, I think that's your idea. The one-point-four million is the, is the tangible equipment. Not a lot has been spent right now towards that one-point-four million. About three-hundred-and-thirty-something-thousand has been spent, uh, in total on capital, and, uh, less than a hundred thousand of that was down towards the actual capital coins, or whatever you wanna call them. The things that are necessary for them to do their operations. Um, at least the, if they're in the process of buying and invoicing, it hasn't gone through.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Marsh? Thank you, sir, for a great job. Always does. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and it is agenda additions, which everybody was really excited about when we started adding things to an already lengthy meeting. Uh, but I go through with this with the department heads on the mornings of this meeting, is that we, we have two to be added. Uh, number ten, we reveal and replace ordinance nineteen dash zero-six.
Blasting ordinance?
Yes.
Just to let people know.
Blasting ordinance. Nineteen dash zero-six. And then number eleven, which is a budget amendment for condemnation. These are both being placed on the planning department with the council approval by those. Uh, it should be.
No, but we're just knocking that through. Six, the original is on your tablet, and yes, you do have the, the draft in your hand that was laid out separate on.
I've got number ten. I was about to say eleven.
No.
This, that was on your tablet.
No.
It's not.
The budget?
Uh, Ms. Bell? Do you have copies of number eleven?
There's nothing to add on there. It was more than discussion.
I'm sorry?
It's more than discussion.
Discussion, got it. So no, no items to add on there? Okay. Is the council good with that? Those agenda additions? Okay. All unfinished business. Uh, number one is a discussion on a theme of brick grants, which we tabled from the previous meeting. Uh, Ms. Tracy McKinnon is here from Western Arkansas Land and Development District. Welcome, Ms. McKinnon.
I had sent Hunter earlier today a flow chart for how those FEMA buyouts work. He wasn't sure if y'all got those or not in your papers. So I didn't know if you wanted me to kind of go over the process, or if you had specific questions you wanted to start with, or how you.
If you remember last, last month's gentleman, we, we tabled this because there was still some question on how this program works. I know Tracy has already been here before, uh, but it was, that's kind of where it was left, if you gentlemen remember. So she's here to, to answer any questions.
So if you look on that, on the, on the chart, we're kind of around this first curve, and we are to the FEMA approves sub-grant is kind of where we're at. Um, the rest of that is kind of the general. The rest of that is kind of the general flow. I have just started this process with my project in Fort Smith. So, I can kind of tell you the way that we've gone about that is we did, we did the appraisals, and then we're making offers, and then we're starting the title search process. So, that's one thing that's kind of different from how it's shown on that flow chart. And kind of the reason we're not starting title searches until after we have accepted offers is just to kind of limit the amount of money we're spending on properties that may not go through the full process, you know? So, we're just trying to spend money on the properties that we're actually moving forward I do have, my plan was to copy the city of Fort Smith's sales contract process. So, they are, they purchase properties in the floodplain on a regular basis, so they have kind of their own internal process, and then I'm just kind of coming along and adding the grant forms to that. So, I did get a, do have a copy of their sales contract that is pretty basic, and that's how we make the initial offers to the property owners is it has the city and the property owner and a legal description, and says what the offer is going to be, and then both parties sign it, and then the city turns that over to the title company to start those next steps to move us towards closing. And I think Hunter had mentioned that there might be some questions about funding and budgeting. So, the city's match, I think, is three hundred and thirty-five thousand, just over that. And this is a grant that we can, the period of performance is three years, so we don't have to complete this grant until November of twenty twenty-six. So, if you wanted to purchase a few of the homes this year and then budget and do a few next year, then that's something that could be worked out as well.
And so, yeah, so there's no really definite timelines on how many you purchase, you know, this year or.
Yeah, just, just the whole project needs to be completed by November of twenty-six.
But you need the full twenty-five percent committed up front. Seven-five, twenty-five?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Committed, but you could budget that out over two years.
And the interesting thing about that, I think, is, you said that before, I think, but as, as we go into this, I know Hunter's still to have meetings with said property owners. Again, I know we've had meetings, but there are gonna be more meetings today saying, hey, we are definitely in, if we bought, for instance, two this year, other folks might see this and go, that's, that makes sense, and we would like to pursue that ourselves.
Well, yeah, and we do, right now, we have, within the application, there were seven properties that were listed as priority, so those should be the ones we would need to approach first. And then we did have a whole list of alternates as well. Because we don't, you know, we didn't do appraisals when we first did the application, so we really don't know. You know, we, we had a Realtor give us some good estimates of what they felt like prices would be in the area, but again, that's been two, a year ago, year and a half ago. So, you know, once we get those first appraisals in, then we'll really know how far the total monies are gonna go.
I guess, obviously, we need to know that there's people interested in moving first before we spend any money or budget money. I mean, have we contacted, we thought it said that the interest in houses.
Oh, I think you for sure have people interested because they've been calling Hunter and I for eighteen months.
Yeah, those meetings have been held, public meetings, and they've come, and it was upstairs seven that are, anybody can change their mind.
Had nineteen interested overall.
Yeah.
And so, you're saying you have nineteen interested overall?
Yes, sir.
And seven are free.
Seven were identified as priority based on their location and kind of the overall benefit to, to that neighborhood. Because obviously, it's more beneficial as a project to take four to five in a row than it is to have one on this street and one over here, you know, because the goal is to have as much space as possible for the water to take over that instead of people's homes. So, that, that's why we, those are identified as priority.
And there's seven houses, not seven homeowners, personally, somebody.
Seven houses, yeah, yeah. Several of them are rentals owned by the same property owner.
One person.
And we are required by law to offer rental assistance payments to those, the tenants that are in the rental properties, and that was all budgeted into the application as well. So, that's all part of the seventy-five, twenty-five.
And so, yeah, our, our match, as I was saying, three hundred and thirty-five plus thousand, the, that would be the maximum. I mean, if, if everybody, you know, took it or whatever, that, that we would be on the.
That's the, I mean, that's the city's match based on the grant amount, and so that if you want to stay within those confines, you know, the grant's not going to increase. So, that's something that, I mean, we can, we can make sure, we can work it to where we stay at that three hundred and thirty-five.
And manage to be fifteen properties to reach that one point four million with the grant though.
I don't think there will be fifteen. On the grant, probably about ten or so maybe.
Yeah, right. But I'm just saying, the nineteen, it wouldn't do the full nineteen that are interested.
Right, no, no, no. No, there's, there's definitely not enough money to do the full, the full nineteen.
No, the grant application was for three point two billion, and we were lucky to get the one point one, just under one point one. Our next step for me is to proceed the funding so that I can seriously pursue property owners to, you know, start looking at appraisals, because I don't have money to spend on appraisals. So, that's, that's my next step.
So, just for folks, since we've got a nice audience that don't know what's going on here, is there a close enough version of how this started and what we're trying to accomplish?
Yes. So, there was a, it was the major rain event in June of twenty twenty-two.
June tenth.
June tenth, twenty twenty-two, where houses along, where are the streets?
Atlanta, Baltimore, Essex, Tenille.
Yes.
They all flooded.
So, those, those houses all took on water during that event. So, it was at that time that the city then contacted our office to see about some potential grant funding for different types of projects. And one of those projects that's possible is a FEMA-funded buyout program where the city purchases these homes from the property owners, allowing them to be able to move to a non-flooding location. And then by the regulation, FEMA regulations, the city has to demolish those homes and have it remain in open green space for the rest of eternity. And so, that helps reestablish the floodplain through that area that had, where those homes had been built. So, that's how we got here.
In a nutshell, fly, brother.
Well, I, I knew all that. I just thought that Mr. Richards, Greenwood now, basically, would.
Well, I think that, you know, I mean, maybe the, I think that three thirty-five and by that, that twenty-four, you know, looks like around probably fourteen thousand a month, you know, that we could see, you know, outcome if we're trying to budget for it or whatever, you know? And this means two months have already passed, you know, so really, you're saying, well, maybe it's just like twenty-two months. But it's feasible that we could settle on most of them this year. I mean, I guess, or are we, are we just saying, well, we're gonna hold off on, on part of y'all and put it on into the, to the next year?
Yeah, I mean, that's, if you're, if you're wanting to kind of, to spread that out, then yeah, I think definitely we would want to identify just one or two, a couple to start with, because this is also, it is, it's supposed to be a reimbursing grant, which would mean you would pay the money upfront and then get your seventy-five thousand back, but that's not to say you have to spend the full one point whatever million upfront. We could purchase a, we could purchase a single property, go all the way through that process, do the reimbursement, get your seventy-five back, and then basically, your match funds are then just on a rolling basis going out and coming back in that way.
Have we discussed who's maintaining green space after it's?
It'll be the Parks Department.
Congratulations.
It'll be the city for sure.
I need more help.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Richards. So, if I understand correctly, after you've demolished those homes and opened up that floodplain, is that then gonna decrease the amount of flooding that we saw in the great flood through, like La Fiesta and Walgreens and everything else? What happens by demolishing those homes, opening up the green space? What happens going forward?
That is the idea. And that's why the, we're focused on trying to get an entire row, or in this case, I think we're focused on an entire cul-de-sac, because all the water that stays on that green grass and goes into the ground is water that isn't going to cross the street hopefully and go into the houses that remain on the other side of the street.
So, it's one project that's for the greater good of the entire city and the floodplains to rally. That's why I'm.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, based on your experience before submit, how quickly is the reverse reimbursement process?
We haven't gotten to the reimbursement process yet. We just signed our first sales contracts last week, and I dropped them off to the city of Fort Smith today. So, we haven't, we haven't been through the reimbursement process. But I would, but based on reimbursements with other FEMA projects, not as, you know, just every FEMA project is a reimbursing thing, we're talking, I mean, two weeks to a month. I mean, you know, it, it depends on how, how busy the state is with other things, because this, the, the division that manages this is also over disasters. So, like last year when there was the big tornado in Little Rock, we, you know, we didn't see reimbursements for, for several weeks because just they weren't in the office because they were dealing with those. So, there are circumstances where something could impact the time of the reimbursement, but it's usually not as severe.
Mr. Nick, I'm sorry, Mr. Nichols had his hand up.
Yeah, I just got a real quick question. The green space, we're looking at, I'm very familiar with that cul-de-sac and the people that flooded four times that I know of. Did you get all that out? You put green space in there, like, is the city allowed to put a park or something out? You guess you gotta leave it green space.
The city could put a park. It would have to be like a pavilion or playground, like, you can't put an enclosed structure back in the floodplain, something that water can freely flow through. So, yes, it could technically become an actual city park space.
But it would also be a very wet damp space as well, correct?
Yeah, yeah. So, there's gonna be times where it may be unusable because it is going to probably flood, but yes.
It could be your second splash, though.
That, continue, that's what my question was, is if we bought a whole lot of green space, which is good for all these people to keep getting flooded, but we could touch the land and, you know, I was considering another wise investment might be, but I wonder about that. So, that's why I asked that question.
My question was about the repairing buffer, whether or not we would, the core would let, or not. I, I think that, can you, to me, this is, this is out of that area.
Yeah.
It's not technically that, what, what we dealt with over on the other creeks, repairing buffer. That's my thought, and that's core.
Yeah, because it's gonna be, I mean, you know.
That repairing buffer on the creek that you were talking about was put there after we went through and made that mitigation creek. That's where they came in and extended that to a hundred feet beyond the, the border creek.
And to answer, Mr. Richards, if I may, I think somebody asked, is this what, so this is a step to do something good, one, for those people that have, are living in an area that nobody up here allowed, but that shouldn't have been built like that, okay? So, we're trying to help with that, mitigate that. Number two, there are other steps being taken, many steps. Hunter is our floodplain manager along with our building inspector. So, we're talking to the core, Colonel Gibbons out of Chaffey. We, we employed him kind of sorta to put hard to fun boots on the ground over there to see what's possibly blocking creeks in Chaffey. So, there's a whole lot of moving parts trying to figure out what to do, that those folks that continually get flooded.
And this doesn't have to be the only buyout grant that we ever do. I mean, I, with the, my experience with Fort Smith and then getting through this one, you know, there'll be opportunities to apply for additional FEMA funding to do five and more properties in the future if this wants to move that direction.
So, it's probably fair to say, like we, like we've experienced with our, the TAC grants and those type of grants, you get them, you're successful, you're more likely to give you another one.
Yes.
If you do a practice.
And the more that Tracy learns, it's getting harder and better at FEMA acquisition every single day.
Well, that's.
Is it basically first step?
Like you said, he means this to be.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We're to the point that we're ready to, you know, start having appraisals done if this, you know, once, if the city is ready to move forward. We do have some paperwork that the mayor hasn't signed that we're, you know, needing to get back to the state at some point, so.
I was more, probably we need to, to create some type of, you know, line item, you know, to start, you know, moving, you know, some funds in that direction.
Just currently not in the budget. So, whatever number he's saying we use this year, you guys are gonna have to consider a resolution for it.
That number is decided by y'all. Y'all, y'all tell me how fast I can go. You give me all the money, I'm gonna try my best to spend it.
Well, I think it's something to think about. I don't know if it's something that we can wait till, you know, your, our first quarterly financial review to see. I mean, it looks like Ronnie, maybe someone's shown just tonight that Ronnie had a tight budget already.
There's two things, there's two components here for, that are my word. One is the cash flow. Now, if it's a month, that's better than if it's two or three months because we're one hundred percent out on the cost initially. And then we're gonna just recover the amount of money that would be on the grant side of that equation. So, I, I've got to know what he's gonna want to end up with as far as the budget is concerned, and I have to be concerned about the cash flow, so.
So, I don't know the council to want to make that call tonight. And if they do, that's fine, but no, I, thank you for coming to explain it again and to clarify what we need to do to get Hunter going on this thing. We, we approved the grant, which obviously, so we knew this was coming. So, yes, sir, Mr. Richards.
Some question. How much do we have in the city coffers at the moment in the bank?
Sixteen million.
Yes, we have sixteen million dollars.
Right.
We're concerned about our current budget for the first quarter and what we're spending, what's coming and going. You're proposing a grant program that completely reimburses the city for any money spent, right?
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent, a large portion.
Three hundred thousand, three, about three hundred and fifty thousand is our.
But we've got the revenue season coming up, and I was just curious as to, if we have the sixteen million dollars and it's available.
You know, we're committed to, I just saw all of that. We're, we're committed in fund balance to all but five million. It's already budgeted mostly in the infrastructure needs for the water sewer department. I'm going after bonding for a large percentage of the amount of money that would be in excess of water sewer's revenue stream, which is to the tune of about seven to eight million dollars. We will have that available, but as far as the general fund is concerned, which is where this comes from, there's, that's why I was just looking up is what they're looking at as far as their end balance. So, the general fund is looking at, it's fairly, it's fairly healthy. I just have to look and see what, what amount he's gonna be.
I just hope it's a good idea to keep picking the can down the road and deciding month after month after month what we may or may not do. This sound like would be a good thing to make a decision on the matter. The funds are available, and we are gonna get reimbursed, so let's go ahead and start tackling the problem that's been in the city for four years.
Well, the problem is that I know and they know a lot of the priorities of the city right now, and so we have to put this in the order of what's the biggest priority. That's the discussion that they need to have with me as far as what the budget's gonna look like, and then they make an informed decision.
You know, what you've kind of opened my eyes to, and I've settled on this city for a year and a half, and I'm only forty-seven years old and I'm still learning, is I spend a lot of money in Fort Smith. I think a lot of people do. When I'm getting my oil changed, when I'm going to Walmart, when I'm gonna go to a restaurant, I never really stopped and thought, if you wanna have good schools, you wanna have good cities, you wanna have good parks, you wanna have good floodplains, you really need to spend your money in the city limits of Greenwood.
Amen.
Yes, absolutely.
But how, I mean, but how do you get that out there? I don't know if there's, I know you guys have a tourism budget to have this and that, but something's gotta be said that next thing I think about getting an oil change, I'm gonna use a Greenwood. I thought, I'm gonna go to Walmart and spend four or five hundred bucks and then use Greenwood's Walmart, not one of the three in Fort Smith. I don't think about those between, show me the budget, the tax revenue, and how we're hurting ourselves by doing so.
It's hugely important that we, that we promote our city and get, and get tax revenue kicked up, as, as I like to say. and get tax revenue kicked up, as I like to say. And to what you spoke on earlier as part of that.
Trying to bring more detail business is more.
Listening and to businesses that want to come here. I, so I'll take a second, two seconds. I just came from a conference and for the governor's conference on tourism in Jonesboro. And Jonesboro is amazing. I'm not planning on doing every ninety thousand people. I kinda like ten thousand, but it's amazing, the food. There is not one single food eatery that I know on this earth that is not in Jonesboro or Arkansas. And it all looks pretty, you know, they were devastated by tornadoes, so they have that to do, rebuild. It's amazing what they're doing. Just talked to a lot of people there and I came back pretty pumped up about it. So I appreciate you and I'd give you a podium on the square on Saturday. But that's, that's discerning we've got to preach. We've got to get, we've got to be business friendly. We've got to get them here to grow. I'm here all my life. I enjoyed when it was eleven hundred people. I enjoyed when it was thirty-five hundred. But to survive, there are towns around us that are hurting severely. This gentleman is an attorney and a couple of them, and they're hurting really bad because they're kinda shutting things down instead of opening them up. So I could preach for an hour and I'll do it here in a minute, but you're exactly right.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir. Y'all are really trying not to hear my speech tonight, all right? I know what you're doing, I know what you're doing.
I voted for you.
Yeah, I know you did.
Okay. People need, my mindset, I'll just tell you what my mindset is. If I can buy it in Greenwood, I buy it to Greenwood. Especially at two ninety-nine in Salt Lake, it's gonna cost you more to go to Fort Smith and back to gap, yeah. If you can buy it in Greenwood, why lose it? You're gonna benefit from it.
But if you can't buy it in Greenwood.
Can't buy it.
Buy it in the county.
Get county.
Because we get the county sales tax out of Fort Smith.
Sorry, Tracy.
If you can't buy it in the county and you can't buy it in Greenwood, buy it online. Because then we hit the tax, the city sells in the tax.
So bless Tracy's heart. She has attended several of these and she gets stuck here for four hours every time. But she lives in Levica.
Charleston.
Charleston, wow, where does that make you? So close, so close. Thank you for coming, people. The council, we do need to make a decision based on.
Well, I would like for Hunter, next month, to bring us the five houses, like you said, that are kinda critical or what you really like, and see what they would approximately appraise for. So that we know, this is what we're gonna probably have to, you know, definitely do that. And then maybe go from there, see as far as how much we budget for like this year.
Do you want me to give them a praise or approximate them?
Just approximate, yeah.
You can't appraise them yet, you can put them.
That's right. Unless we take a fire department or something.
Oh, we issued all these pretty red numbers negative beside it that Mr. Marshall was about twenty minutes ago and then.
I told him to wait for us to go first.
We go first.
I mean, I have trouble budgeting three hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars when we're way off from what we're hoping to be at. I mean, it's a, I don't even know what's a necessary evil. Just get people out of the floodplain, but.
Public safety, public health safety up there.
They're also free to move, it's American.
Some of them are on the hook right now just because of the programs that we've offered them.
Yeah, right, I get, I will wait to, a hundred percent. And hopefully we can get them out there, but, I mean.
Well, I think it's not all, you know, dire straits for 2024. I think, you know, Greenwood benefited greatly from COVID because a lot of our citizens were buying online. And so instead of traveling into Fort Smith or wherever, so a lot of that revenue was coming back to us, you know, in larger percentages than it was in the past or than it is now. But also, I'm sure the mayor will allude to in his speech, you know, that, you know, we're starting to build on the bypass. And I think that with that construction, there's, you know, more people kinda coming in town that are normally not coming into town and buying, you know, at our restaurants and buying, you know, fuel and things like this. So I think that that is going to be a plus to the city, you know. So I'm anxious to see how that unfolds there. But I think, to Mr. Terry's remarks, yeah, that it's still three hundred and thirty-five thousand, still three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
I just need a commitment for the grant so that we don't get to the point where we essentially lose the, that point down. Do you have your estimates, like, for your appraisals? Let's talk about it.
Yeah, we have, we, there's a, I can send, resend you. We had a budget that was prepared, that listed each property individually, plus the cost of, not just purchasing the property, of course. There's demolitions and asbestos inspections and, you know, those other costs that are a little too.
Well, you can share that with us, that would be great.
And just 'cause you'll see it on there, there is a Wafa Diddy administrative fee, but those monies are all.
Wait, what?
You're gonna pay me.
Well, we're just.
You're gonna pay Wafa Diddy, actually, not me personally. The administrative fees are all reimbursed at a hundred percent. So, and I'll make sure that's clear when I send that to you so you don't think, well, you for having to pay them and that. That's all a hundred percent, so, you know, you'll get every single penny of that back. I will get that to you.
We do have a blasting ward that's coming up later for demolition and that.
We also have solar eclipse happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill Charleston Tigers.
Yes.
Will we table it, that's what we're.
Uh, I believe we'll table it, gentlemen, for further, one more time.
We need a.
One more time.
Say.
Motion's sake.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy, thank you, Hunter.
Brown.
Yes.
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 Thank you, next item on the agenda is, uh. Oh, I'm sorry, I jump, I do that all the time. I'm trying to get to my speech people. Number two is city clerk ordinance repealing replacing ordinance number twenty dash oh nine, updating bid requirements.
This is what we talked about last month and the shaded areas are the changes and Travis has blessed it, it looks good to him, so. We just need, I guess, y'all wanna go through all those readings?
I think that's what I wanted to do, is go through all the readings and especially since two councilmen are absent, but to look at it in more detail. Because I'm thinking, I remember the time that we did this, that there was kind of a reason for the amounts that we had at the time. And I'm seeing if there's been any change in the old reasons or not, but.
I do know that it's, from my feedback from the directors, it's a hindrance to them because things have gone up so much that that twenty thousand dollar threshold is very low. That's what I'm hearing from parks, I heard from some of the utility guys, I hope. They really want it raised to help them out.
I mean, twenty thousand dollars can almost be a conversion loan these days. You're a few grand short.
There you go, a few grand short. Anyway, I'd like to just, uh, have this for the first reading, the House alone.
Say.
Motion and second table, is what you said?
No. They're on the floor right now.
Oh, but if you want to. I was kidding, I was kidding. I just thought I'd say.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Maker.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Redwater.
Here.
He knows. An ordinance repealing ordinance number twenty dash zero nine, establishing bidding procedures authorizing the mayor and making arrangements to contract on behalf of the city for all purchases defining professional services, waiving competitive bidding for professional services and authorizing waiving competitive bidding on purchases or contracts when not suitable or practical. Or as may be otherwise authorized by state law, I declare this a particular declaration of emergency and for other purposes.
Thank you. Uh, number three is payment of Crawford Construction invoice from Cuthbert Bridge Project. We tabled this from last meeting. I don't know that we, I have a personal thought about it, but I don't know that, I'm kinda ready to get this thing paid and move on down the road. I know, so that's the reason I'm willing to, or I would say we table this again. Or unless you wanna just, I mean, we got ready to look at it. I mean, we think you'll.
Well, I mean, we're either gonna pay it or we're not.
Well, I.
I mean, we're, tableing is gonna, what, get Daniel back in here to do this, we should pay it, I guess.
I don't know how you feel, to be honest with you. And I'm not saying it should be, it shouldn't be up to you.
Right, that's exactly right.
So you all should be able to refine on this and this tonight and we're waiting to let, I'm there always now, I'm ready to table it. I do feel like I'm ready for it to go away, I don't think that. I don't wanna throw away twenty-four thousand dollars, but. Twenty-four. I do, I can provide at least forty if you like. We have, I have a email, Daniel, to all of us here at City Hall, pretty much, regarding this spreadsheet that I have in my hand and list this particular item on here for twenty-four thousand dollars to Crawford Construction. And the notation on distilled nine pilings installation and trucking includes Holmes Crane work, which is kind of another little twist to this, that they're claiming that's paid out of there. We kinda think, Tom, I think, thinks a little bit like we ought to deduct that crane work out of that, so.
Daniel's.
Or Daniel's thoughts, I guess. So I don't know.
So it's something we can discuss, I imagine.
I, yeah, you can't vote on it.
Right.
But I think it needs more some, more discussion. But you're right, we're gonna pay it or not, but. And I will say this, even though I've spoken to Mr. Crawford, he was here for another reason here, it's been a couple weeks ago, three weeks ago. He did hint to me that he would, you know, like to see where this is going. But I'm not, we've not received anything further from them. We're not, the city is not in the habit of not paying bills. And so we've not got an overdue notice or anything like that. Is that correct? As far as we know. As far as we know, it was just submitted to us in November. Well, yeah, that's correct. Which here it is, November, March.
Is that agreement from Holmes or?
That's the, that's the thing. This thing had so many kind of, Terry, things been litigating. There'll be more discussion about it. It's, this thing has so many moving parts. And it didn't, it shouldn't have, in my opinion, but it did. And so I don't know, I don't think you'd agree with us for that. Other than it needs more discussion.
Well, that spreadsheet that you referred to, if you get to that, be something to share to us.
Oh, absolutely, you'll have both of you, okay, sure. We'll discuss them and what you felt negative on. And what is that meeting?
It's in the floor, I'm hesitant.
Okay.
I will tell you that, we talked to Daniel about that after I was made aware of that today. He said that was the first iteration of that document that came from a discussion with Holmes, the engineering firm, and Holmes and all the people that were involved. And he, they went back to the drawing board because of the cost and because of some other things that had happened. And that was not in the latest iteration that was agreed upon by all the people that were involved. That is him talking, I think, just sharing that with you. And he said that in talking with Holmes, Holmes said he was going to eat the cost of the actual equipment, the crane. And by the fact that that was included in that twenty-four thousand dollar price, he's saying at the very least, if that is a legitimate expense that we will be willing to pay, the cost of the crane should be removed from the twenty-four thousand. That's, that's how he came to that decision or that recommendation. I, that's all I can speak for him because that's all I heard today.
So, let, we'll talk about it in a minute. This, hopefully we can get this to take fit, or we can come to a conclusion whether next, whenever, month, whatever it takes, as soon as possible. And we can set some guidelines for this not to happen. Sorry, I made a motion to table. I made a motion, in a second.
Say.
Second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Maker.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Redwater.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. I don't know why you're all here. I will move over here. The two councilmen show, not show up tonight just so I can put my podium right there in front of them. So just so the audience knows, the councilman, illegally, I might add, Reverend, they're taking bets on how long I speak.
There's no money.
There's no money involved. It's just, it's just a pride thing.
Right.
We'll bet the over.
What's the over/under?
Yeah.
Bet the over.
A pastor from the Nazarene church wants to know what the over/under is. That's awesome. My grandmother was a long time manager in church. So, uh, somebody asked me today, one of the department heads, Sonny Bell, asked me today about it, if I could kinda give him some inside information. I said, I'd be glad to, it's anywhere from fifteen minutes to two hours. There is a chance to. So I don't know when the official clock starts, but I'll let you guys do that. So, uh, this is entitled Reaping the Artist. So I want to thank you all for being here tonight. Absolutely appreciate the crowd that's here tonight. And I'd like to thank our city council members, AC Brown, Ralph Mieker, Rod Powell, Daniel McDaniel, Tim Terry, and Roger Rainwater. Our city clerk treasurer, Charlotte Terry, and our city attorney, Travis Plummer. And our commission chairs, Water, Wastewater Chair Teresa Burchett, Parks Chair Joel Goldstein, Planning Chair Reagan Clements, and AMP Chair Mike McAllister. Also want to recognize our department heads, Fire Chief Stuart Bryan, our new police chief Brad Hobbs, Street Department Jeff Turner, Water, Tim Posey, Wastewater Dalton Moore, Water Treatment, Greg Cross, Finance, Tom Marsh, Parks, Casey Craig, Planning Department, Sonny Bell, and our brilliant Human Resources and Executive Assistant, Danielle Smith. So I would also at this time, the logo that you see on the screen was designed by Miss Erica Wall. She was our logo gal this week, so I'm gonna give her a little bit of. I've never had a logo before, thank you so much. As the saying goes, behind every successful man is a strong one. My wife Pam has always been by my side for over forty-five years. The only time she's been behind me is to hold me up through the tough times. So thank you. I would like to report to you tonight that the state of our city is indeed strong. I know you heard a financial report that didn't, didn't lean itself that way, but there's reasons for that, and we're gonna, we're gonna take care of that. Twenty twenty-three combined city and county sales tax revenue collections exceeded twenty twenty-two collections by five point thirty-four percent, with city sales and use tax up five point twenty percent over fiscal year in twenty twenty-two. Protected twenty twenty-four combined sales tax revenue growth is budgeted to increase over point five percent. Protected revenue from all city revenue sources is projected to increase in twenty twenty-three by nine point forty-seven percent. The current twenty twenty-four approved city budget is twenty-five point six million dollars, made up of an operations budget of twelve million and thirteen point six million in capital spending. One thing I've discovered over the nine and a half years as mayor is growing a city resembles the farming process. The first step in any project is preparation. We look at the reason why and the actual need. Because not all good ideas are necessarily city projects. Then we examine the feasibility and design the plans for it. The next step is planting the seeds, which in our case means funding. The third step is protecting the crop. As a board member of the River Valley Film Society, I heard once that every movie doesn't want to be made, meaning that it takes diligence to complete a production. The same is true for city projects because there are a number of factors that can kill it from the very beginning, from start to finish. If a plant survives all of these steps, then you get to reap the harvest of your labor, which we did on Friday with the Trey Burgess Memorial Highway. We have been talking about having bypass for over twenty-five years. In twenty nineteen, we took, we took our plans to RDOT. Former Director Scott Bennett showed us a stack, no joke, of past ideas, but they thought this one might be viable. He said we needed three things. First, money. Second, we needed land to build a highway on it. Third, the willingness to take over the old highway as a city street. And then he continued with the money. Heard that a couple of times. Fortunately, Dr. James Burgess was with us at the meeting and explained that he was willing to provide his property for the project. In planting this project, we needed to secure the funding. The city would be responsible for twenty percent of the cost, which at the time was estimated to be twenty-six million dollars. We needed to find five million dollars. So I walked into our finance director, Tom Marsh's office, and asked if this was even possible. And I shut the door real quick. He developed a bond issue that would require a vote of the citizens. Bob Purvis, Chamber of Commerce Director, put together a committee consisting of some of the folks that are here tonight, Faris Shofak, Buddy Lloyd, Sonny Bell, Tammy Riley, Todd Basham, Sean Lynn, Jeff Bryant, Cheryl Gardner, Michael Lejeune, Dr. Brandon Chase Goldsmith, and myself, to campaign for the issue, which by the way, passed with an overwhelming seventy-six percent. Once the funding seeds were planted, we had to protect the project. The next step was to secure the land and pass all the various RDOT studies and permits. While this process was happening, unfortunately, my good friend and yours, Dr. Burgess passed. The last time we talked, he told me that he hoped he would get to see the highway completed in his lifetime. He was sitting in my office. He, he kind of leaned over where he could see me a little better, and he sized me up and he said, we, we need to see this in your lifetime. I will be forever grateful to him and his family, excuse me, who honored his wishes and provided the land to the city. Truly, without their help, this would have never happened. Last Friday, we held a groundbreaking ceremony led by RDOT Director Lori Tudor along with Congressman Steve Womack, State Senator Gary Stubblefield, State Representative Lee Johnson, and State Highway Commissioner Keith Gibson. Quite a crew here in Greenwood. They talked about the city, state, and national collaborations it took to make the Trey Burgess Memorial Highway possible. The current estimate for the project is fifty-seven point eight million dollars. Remember, it was twenty-six, five, six years ago. Meaning by logging in the original five million dollars in twenty nineteen, we saved the citizens of Greenwood six million dollars. Quite simply, this highway is indeed a dream come true. Apart from the safety aspects and traffic relief, it will create additional, to your point, sir, economic opportunities for our citizens for decades to come. The process of growing Greenwood is ongoing. Today, I'm going to highlight projects that are in preparation, planting, and protection phases, and we will celebrate the harvest of all of our property. First, you gotta prepare the soil. The first step in the farming process is preparation of the soil and land. The Greenwood School District prepares our kids for success. I know this firsthand. My wife Pam was elementary teacher for twenty-seven years and still subs once she's needed. Our district continues its excellence in education with a thirteen to one student teacher ratio and a ninety-six percent graduation rate. As the fortieth largest city in Arkansas, we are ranked the third best district in the state, second best to teach, and first best school district for athletics in Arkansas, no surprise. Our football team won their eleventh straight state championship with a thirteen and zero season this year. Last year, we had state championships in girls' cross-country, individual wrestling, and cheerleading. Our girls' basketball team are on their way to a three-peat and will be competing for the state championship on Friday afternoon. Greenwood School District welcomes military families and students. They are currently ranked fourth in military student enrollment in the state, with two-hundred-and-forty-seven military students in our district. Recently had the honor and privilege to attend a ceremony with Colonel Sarah Stigler, Special Assistant to the one-eighty-eighth Wing Commander. Local Greenwood ROTC member Laura Reynolds received the Brigadier General Bill Mitchell Award and was promoted to Cadet Second Lieutenant at the Civil Air Patrol. Really, really a cool moment to be in. The Greenwood School District is proud to partner with the Ebbing Air Force Base in Portsmouth. The Department of Defense Foreign Military Sales Mission is happening. It's no joke. The Portsmouth Airport runway is currently being extended for the F-35 training mission. As they are preparing for the Singaporeans, the first pilots from Germany and Poland are expected to arrive this year to train on F-16 fighters. So you will hear the sound of freedom once again over our, over our heads. The foreign military sales mission will boost, you ready? The River Valley Economy, I didn't make this up, about one billion dollars a year, and that includes us. I have met with all the regional mayors, along with local and international military officials, to discuss, discuss how we prepare for the influx of families, military personnel, and support staff who will be relocating here. This is a big augen deal, people. It is. We have several projects that are in the preparation phase. Chamber Director Bob Purvis and the Economic Development Committee are working with, this is cool, with the game and fish, to locate a site for a public shooting range that will provide a competition area for school shooting teams, which would bring in thousands of visitors. They had one of these in Jacksonville, it's amazing. They are also actively pursuing federal electric vehicle charging station grants to make Greenwood an official stop. Who would have thought? As part of Phase Two of the bypass, we are exploring annexing the properties along the route. This will allow us to put together zoning and infrastructure plans so that the South Greenwood's economic development grows smartly. The planning needs to happen now. The city has accepted another historical bridge from the Frog Bayou Creek in Alma. Of all places, we're gonna get a bridge from Alma, but we're gonna do it better. That's where my friends in Alma. As part of the RDOT Historic Bridge Program, the grant requires it to be placed on a walking trail, and we are looking in the spots around town. If you've not been to Greenwood lately, please go look at the bridge that we placed out there, nineteen thirty-one Pony Trust Bridge, it's amazing. Fox Run Road going to the Splash Pad is currently gravel, and we are engineering it to bring the road up to city standards. The goal is to go, is to eventually go all the way up to Bell Park, creating an egress and ingress into and out of the park, which is best early news. A committee on the Parks Department has been formed in order to develop an inclusive park on a property off of West Side Drive that was donated back in the day to the city by the Walker Development. That's a big project, and it's got a great committee working hard and raising funds. The park will be ADA compliance, allowing children with and without disabilities to play together. Plant a seed. The next phase in the farming process is planting. For a city project, that means receiving funds. And we were talking about all the go with this. As you know, nothing happens without money. I am always encouraging our department heads to search for grants and outside funding for their specific projects. Since I have been in office, we have had two major flooding events that devastated residential properties, causing families to be dislocated. We've been looking into a variety of solutions, including conversations with the cord engineers, along with Colonel Givens at Port Chaffey, to find a viable, viable solution. We've been approved for FEMA grants, as we heard tonight, which will allow us to buy out properties in the flood zones from willing residents whom we all hope will remain Greenwood citizens. Our goal is to transform these areas into green spaces. We will be receiving state aid to cover the majority of the cost to overlay Bell Road from Center Street to Denver and on Denver to Jones. These streets are the main corridors to the high school and are in need of repair because of the high volume of traffic they receive on a daily basis. Congressman Womack alluded to the fact that the reason they're wore out is those buses that, that, uh, coaches, uh, beat every year, and they send them back on their way home to their, to their hound, home, so. He nailed it. Finally, after we purchased a new building for our senior center, using American Rescue Plan Act funding, we received a five hundred thousand dollar Arkansas Economic Development Commission grant to meet the needs of our residences. The center will provide a top-notch food and entertainment facility where our Arctic blonde citizens can have a place for community and fellowship. They took care of us, it is time we take care of them. We are currently seeking bids to maximize our dollars in the face of rising construction costs, you all seen that. The next thing is protecting the crop. Once a crop is planted, you must protect it as it grows to maturity. These are a number of factors that can delay, there are a number of factors that can delay or stop a project even after it has been funded. Also, as a city, it's our job to protect our citizens. When I was notified of Chief Dawson's retirement, I convened a hiring committee made up of current and past law enforcement personnel and a city council member. The committee nominated, and I chose, Brad Hobbs to serve as your next police chief. Once Hobbs was selected, he came to me and he said, when can I start chiefing? And I said, you chief away, and he is doing that. He quickly began making building improvements and transitioning his command staff. Chief Hobbs and his team are working toward being an accredited agency, excuse me, through the Arkansas Law Enforcement Accreditation Program, ALEEP. This accreditation is a premier program and will assist in obtaining future grants. To achieve this accreditation, the police department will adopt current federal, state, and best practice policies. The ALEEP program is sponsored by the Arkansas Chiefs of Police Association, the Arkansas Sheriff's Association, and the Arkansas Municipal League, of which I serve on the executive committees. Soon you will see renovations to the police department that were recently passed in the twenty twenty-four budget. The new police logo, this is awesome, will soon dawn their uniforms. I think it's on the uniform as we speak. The new patch and logo align the police department with our other departments and shows unity and commitment. Thank you for doing that. Vast improvements have been made to their training range, which include roadwork completed by our own street department, new targets, and mock training vehicles. They have implemented a training schedule that far exceeds the minimum requirements of firearms training. The twenty twenty-three, proud to announce, police department awards include Officer of the Year Trent Cowan, Top Shot Daniel Haddock, Mayor's Award Richie Wofford, DWI Award Trent Cowan, and Chief's Award Niva Mayhem. Under the leadership of Chief Stuart Ryan, speaking of chiefs, our city has maintained a fire chief, Stuart Ryan, has maintained a Class II Public Protection classification by the ISO program, placing Greenwood in the top five percent of all communities evaluated in the United States. We have been nationally recognized as a fire wise community for the last thirteen years and a IEFC Ready Set Go community. A new sub, Heavy Duty Rescue Engine Number One, went in service in July and replaced the non-NFPA compliant Freightliner Engine Number One. They are putting plans together for the construction of Station Three and a future training facility. Our fire department continues to recruit and rigorously train. I know this because they have food and I go over and enjoy the food after the training. The twenty twenty-three firefighter of the year, this year, is Justin King. Proud popper right over there. Once a project has been approved and funded, the crucial step in making sure it will happen sometimes involves acquiring easements and annexing of property into the city. I am very excited to announce that Greenwood Lake is finally in Greenwood. It's been a long time coming. Uh, we annexed the lake into the city limits last year, which will make it possible for us to get great funding, grant funding for the Michael Lejeune Trail System. We are also looking to expand our trails to tie into the new bypass. You're gonna be able to walk all over this place one of these days soon. Hunter Michaels, our building inspector, is in the process of gathering easements for Phase Two of the Center Street Sidewalk Project. I was told one time that you can't build a sidewalk on a state highway, and not only did we do that, they paid for it. We have acquired easements in order to build a new road from Westwood Drive to Liberty Drive that will run parallel to the trail. It will provide access to the new Mercy Clinic and traffic relief to the area. As of right now, it is unofficially named Veterans Drive. This project is currently at for bid for construction. Then we're gonna reap the harvest. It takes some projects longer than others to grow to maturity, be it funding problems, state level timelines, or other issues. Some grand ideas might not be right for the moment. For example, when I first arrived in office, we drew up plans and received estimates on creating a new sports complex. We worked on it for almost three years. As good of an idea as it seemed to be, the Boys and Girls Club, with the city's help, were able to make improvements to their own facilities to accommodate more turns. And the property we were looking at was better suited for a housing development called the East Village, where we did a groundbreaking today. The first houses are being built in the East Village, which I refer to as Area Two Fifty-One, because I think it sounds cool, for those of you that are old enough to know what that means. There will be two hundred and fifty-one homes in that development. It will be the largest development in Greenwood with that many homes, that was built, that many dwellings, it's a site to be older, I think there's seventeen coming out of the ground. With four partners, this will not be a cookie cutter subdivision. They have numerous styles of homes and four pan, plans to offer current residents looking for an upgrade or new citizen moving to Greenwood. We work together with the builders to ensure that we would meet, they would meet our city development standards. However, they have gone above and beyond providing multi-use walking trails and decorative lighting, and they could have done this anywhere. We should all be grateful to residents who decide to invest their order of money in our city. Last year, we had our first apartment complex built in over a decade. The Bean Place. The cool part about that is it was built, sorry, on the location of a really good friend of mine. His name was Butch Bean. After he passed, who, he was also a developer builder. After he passed, the developer bought the property from the family and built an attractive multifamily complex. We have had several reports over the years that had pointed out the need for more rentals, and this indeed fills an important economic gap for our city. On the western bookends of Greenwood, I like to call it, the Curve, has been in process for many years. In twenty twenty-three, we acquired the water rights from Jamesport, which will allow that project to finally begin. The county has approved the construction of the Sebastian County Library on the Curve. Brom's Ice Cream and Dairy Store has purchased their property and will be building at that location. This will encourage other retail businesses and restaurants to follow, creating a vibrant entrance into our city, and will increase our sales tax revenue. An added bonus of this development is that Jacob Burton, owner of the Curve, local kid, I call him a kid, he's probably forty-five years old, or more. He's the owner of the Curve, is moving tons of material to the new bypass. In a sense, we are knocking out two projects with one stone, literally. A testament to Greenwood's western growth is the new Mercy Clinic being built in the corner of Highway Seventy-One and Liberty. corner of Highway 71 and Liberty Drive. They needed more space for growing. I believe it's the perfect spot because the area showcases our city's commerce, education, and health. Additionally, Terry and Rusty Smith coordinated with the city to create a food truck park called Tendies on the Spur, a hometown eatery, with six vendors that provides a variety of food options and an outdoor dining experience, and it looks cool, too. Down the road from there, starting at Golden Years Retirement Center and going to Denver Street, Phase One of the Center Street Sidewalk received grants four years ago, and it was finally completed last year after none other than our fantastically talented Daniel Smith worked diligently to get those easements that had been wholly cut the project. Another long-term project that is finally underway is the Splash Pad. We have been talking about having Splash Pad for over 15 years, easy. And various plans have been drawn up for multiple locations around Bell Park. After purchasing the 19 acres adjoining the park, instead of taking up green space where the soccer field are located, this spot, also being closer to our water wastewater infrastructure, made the most sense. We broke ground on Splash Pad a couple months ago, and we added, also added a new 18-hole disc golf course on lower Bell Park. Puto's to you, sir, for getting things done, has been laying dormant for years. Finally, the Cuthbert Ridge projected project started when I was first director, so that's been a long time ago, when we acquired the bridge from RDOT. After years of planning, the Parks Commission was able to add the bridge as the entrance to the Michael Lejeune Trail System in Greenwood Lake. One thing I love about our citizens is their generosity. I would like to thank the Cuthbert family and the Arkansas Community Foundation for the generous donations that made this bridge project possible. Also, local resident Josh Nalls donated a trolley to the city. He tried to sell it to me for months, and I finally held out, and he said, "I'll just give it to you." It will be used, it looks amazing. We had it wrapped, A and D commissioned and paid to have this thing wrapped, and I can't wait for you to see it. It will be used to transport people at special events to our guests around, to tour guests around the city and act as a billboard advertising our wonderful town. So what has kept me going for almost a decade has been watching all the activity happening around town. For example, we had our first movie night in the park. It was special seeing families with their kids enjoying a Friday night evening together. My grandson Heath and other kids provided entertainment by dancing around the screen. I got it on video if you want to watch it. Freedom Fest and the Fall Festival have been growing and getting bigger and better each year. We are a town where families can come to be together. This is why Greenwood feels like home. As we grow more and more, our residents are investing in our town, getting involved in the community and starting businesses. Our citizens are bringing new ideas and fresh concepts to our city. One of my favorite things every year are the Eagle Scout projects. Councilman Baker part of that program, or Councilman Powell is part of that program. Last year, they built, this may be your son, I'm not sure, built two bridges on the lake, three, sorry, three bridges on the lake, and they're amazing. And by the way, they built a, a pontoon of a sort to haul material from the dam over to the area. It was all, it was, it was quite a sight to see. I did have a lady that called from Lisbon there saying, "What's going on?" But it's really amazing. Beyond the projects themselves, I love seeing people, especially kids, take ownership of where they live. This is your city, and we are here to serve you. Another thing I've learned over the years is that our citizens are smarter than we are. I remember when people were completely against food trucks, but now we have a thriving food truck park that is packed almost every time I drive by. We have to work towards being more business friendly. We must. On the wall, meaning you don't notice it, but I put it up there for myself, and I placed it there for these gentlemen, is a scripture from Philippians 2:4. Let each of you look not only to his own interest, but also to the interests of others. We need to trust our citizens and let the marketplace decide what the people want. That is how capitalism works. Last week, I mentioned earlier, I attended the 50th Annual Government Conference on Tourism. It was my first time. I can't believe I haven't been there before, and I'll be going back next year. I came back very motivated and energized with fresh ideas on how to grow and promote our amazing city. One thing I picked up while I was there is no matter how big your town is, because there was a lot of talk about $100 million bonds and things that they could do, and the city of Cav, a good friend of mine, the mayor from there, is opening the doors on this unbelievable facility that houses 15 basketball courts and pickleball courts and all the amenities that go with it. They passed a $100 million bond to do that and other things with. But they also said from the same podium or the same meeting, "Think about who you are and what you have, because sometimes you don't realize what you have and how great those things are to people outside your city." We get used to all the amenities we have, from trails to parks and lakes, but not every city has what we have. Greenwood is indeed a very special place. Yes, there's always more work to be done, but we should pause for a moment and enjoy everything we've accomplished. We should all feel proud of what we've done, what we have, and what we've done. Thank you, and may God bless you. That's Phase One. I'll be getting Phase Two in just a moment. Okay, so the results, the results are in, uh, Tim, who is that? Is that you? Travis Plummer, City Attorney, wins 32 minutes and 15 seconds. And it was 31:05, so this is, nothing. Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you for the logo.
Hey, John.
Okay, uh, number five, I think we're going to table, but if we, we get anything on this today, you may. So.
No.
That's okay. So I spoke to three, I had three visitors last week that come in from Little Rock, and they are, have started a procurement company service, and I was very, very interested in what they had to say. Basically, it's a company that can come in and save us a lot of money. I immediately said, "Is this legal?" And one of the, one of the young ladies that was part of it, who worked for Arkansas Municipal League for 23 years, so they assured me that it is, but what they can, what they can provide for us is a way of not necessarily having to go out for hard bids, and you can kind of pick and choose, and I'll run this by everybody, but I want, in order to you to be a part of that, or be able to use it, you have to put it on your, your, we have to have the ordinance to do that. So we didn't get the information we needed today to do that, so we'll, we'll business. I would like to table this for next month, if that's okay? Need to vote on that? Yes, motion? Second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't move that back, son. You can do right there.
I can do it.
Right there. So number six is planning ordinance to rezonate KC Colling property in R1 to, R3.
Can I get this one signed?
Yes, you can, but it'll not yet.
Go with my other, thank you.
Yeah, you're up, thank you.
Number six, did you?
Uh, yes, sir.
I'll make the motion, we, for the ordinance for the first reading of the ballot.
Second. Got a motion, second, read my title, hold on.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Raymar.
Yes.
And, amendments, amending ordinance number 23-10 for the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Greenwood, amending the officials on the city of Greenwood declaring an emergency?
No.
Okay.
No, I won't renew that.
I saw on the emergency.
All right.
Perfect.
Are you sure Daniel's not here? There is that.
Okay, let's, let's try it with the emergency clause. That would make the development, right?
What the development plan to do with this property?
Uh, bills to be placed on it.
Well, I'll just table, I'll make the motion to spend the rules by second, or just throw some fishing bait out there and see what happens.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Second. Motion, second.
Mr. Brown.
No.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Raymar.
Yes.
I have to, my, I don't vote, yes.
Okay, it passes with the mayor voting to pass.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
I'll make the motion to the, the, the.
Second. Motion, second to that.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Raymar.
Yes.
And?
Make the motion to the emergency clause.
Second.
Motion, second to enact emergency clause?
Mr. Brown.
No.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Raymar.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, mayor votes to pass it? It passes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, number seven, Councilman Terry, discussion of City Council Code of Conduct.
Well, okay, obviously, this goes back, we talked about this Cuthbert Bridge and our $24,000 invoice and just the whole project in general. I probably ought to table this, since Daniel, I mean, he's kind of vocal for an optic, okay, I appreciate everything he's done to get that project going, and it looks beautiful, like you alluded to in the speech. It's certainly set back here and threw weeds and bugs and snakes behind City Hall for many years. I really want you to all be bought it in the first place, but it turned out to work out well. But the way that the project took life, I guess, um, really is, is still baffles me, and obviously, we're still dealing with invoices, it being ticked around, no one knows who's in charge, who's paying, who's approved it, Parks Department has no, I mean, we talked with them last week, or asked them last week, they all kind of shrugged their shoulders. So I just wanted to just, just kind of discuss, you know, probably councilmen shouldn't be taking on projects that deal with city funding. I mean, we have a parking match for that, I guess, um, if we have an idea, I think maybe we should, you know, maybe we should make a walking trail. So we need to present that to the right avenues, have to go to the proper channels, so on and so forth. I mean, this bridge project, originally, we talked about redoing the old bridge over the lake, y'all know the old Iron Bridge, there was plenty involved for that. Well, that kind of fell through, and then all of a sudden, there was private funding for this Cuthbert Bridge, and away we'd go, all of a sudden, dirt's starting to get moved, and then all of a sudden, we need $200,000 from the Parks Department, and then all of a sudden, it just showed up somehow, and the Parks people didn't really, it just was kind of, I don't know, slyly, but it didn't look real good, I guess is the term to say. So I just, there's state laws that talk about what we're supposed to do and not to do as a councilor, as alderman. Uh, I have an ordinance that kind of drummed up here that, you know, we have guidelines set for the mayor and the city clerk and the city attorney, what their job is, what they should, and when they should be here, what hours they should take on, so on and so forth. I mean, we don't really need, I guess, an ordinance describing what our job is. Uh, it's already set out, and I believe in our state laws, um, 14-43-504, just to name one, 1443502. Um, I don't, I just, just kind of want to call the record and say, we need to make sure we dot all of our i's and cross all of our t's before we start spending a lot of city money. Again, I can, and I don't have any problem bringing this back up, I'm sure Daniel's watching wherever he's at, I'm not picking on him, it's just he has to come on and do it. I mean, we talked about, we, we approved funding a while back for a turn lane to go up on the corner of your road where the school traffic is just horrible, not because it's in front of my house, but it's just horrible, everybody can attest to that. That money got moved somehow to somewhere else. Well, I mean, I can't call Steve Forsgren in the morning and say, "Go start putting that turn lane in, and I'll just send the bill to the street department, we'll get it taken care of." That's not how it works. And in essence, that's how this bridge project, in my eyes, man. I'm sure there's a paper trail, you talked about it, spreadsheet, I'm sure there's emails. And still, yeah, we have $24,000, we have no idea who's responsible for, who approved it, who didn't approve it, who's going to pay it, so, and normally, that doesn't happen. No, I don't like the city owing bills, especially three or four months out, but I also don't like the city make, pay some payments on projects that weren't, that weren't supposed to pay for. So unfortunately or unfortunately, everyone wants to gather those, I guess, that we're supposed to pay for or not, so hopefully, since we table that again tonight, I think we'll, maybe we'll get some answers. That's all I want to discuss.
No, I appreciate your, your input on that, and I would, I would say, you said it too, I do appreciate Daniel making it happen because it's sitting dormant for years. I was the first, and I, I got that bridge, donated, and, and the free bridge turned into half a million dollars, which kind of happens sometimes, but so, and council has approved another bridge that we're getting from Allen and Bird. So what my promise is to you and all councilmen is that this bridge will be able, different than, again, not against Daniel, he was amazing during this thing, we probably wouldn't have got many of the things done without his, without his assistance, but out of lane. So we'll keep this one in lane, and Parks Department has not even said, "Hey, we want this other bridge." I did that on my own, except, and applying, and with y'all's approval, yet again. So that bridge will, yes, we've not gotten it yet, it's still in, it's on the creek or the river up there, so when we do get it, we'll make sure that that gets under either the Parks Department or the Street Department or whoever it belongs, and have that in the future for sure, so.
Well, I think that, you know, just kind of tack on to what Tim said, I think any kind of major project needs to have something of a scope of work and, and, you know, responsible parties involved and stuff, so that, you know, something like this will, will happen again.
Yep, I totally agree.
So does this need to be tabled?
Uh, you want to table it, Mr. Councilman Terry?
I mean, just, I'm just, I mean, I don't, I'm sure I'll be getting phone calls here before I get the house back, so. I'll, I'll put it on the next month if I need to.
All right, we can add it then, if we need to, okay. All right, thank you. Uh, move on to number eight, is the city attorney, Masonic Lodge, discussion.
So, yeah, we, I think we've talked about this last couple of months, about Masonic Lodge property where they're currently located, um, what that's going to look like after RDOT purchases the part of that that they need, and then what is the city willing to do to help them have, um, possession of the lots on Main Street, I believe. And so we've talked about a couple of different things.
One lot.
Or one lot, excuse me, one lot. Uh, so we talked about a couple of different ways that can happen. Once RDOT takes what it is going to take, that it's going to use, it doesn't leave them much property to speak of at all, it's, it's not going to be usable at all, it's not very comparable to what the city has, so it creates issues as far as swap goes, as well as some... creates issues as far as swap goes, as well as, um, some aspects of state law, so, we talked about maybe the city buying, and then them buying from the city, uh, that could create issues as well when it comes to competitive bidding, so one of the latest ideas we've had, and discussions we've had, I talked to some of the members that are here, would be the city actually leasing the lot on Main Street to the masons, uh, for, uh, a nominal amount for a period of one hundred years or something to that effect. Uh, and then maybe the masons could just deal with RDOT on the remaining property that they have that's gonna be rendered useless. So, that's the latest idea that we've talked about, talked to mayor about it. Um, it's really according to city council, city council would have to approve any type of a lease agreement, um, that the city would enter into with Masonic Lodge. But aside from that, it's up for discussion, I believe. It sounded like it was okay with them when the idea was presented.
Counselor. Thoughts?
Well, obviously I'm speaking out of under two hats on this deal because I'm a member of both of these boards, but, um, ultimately, I, I kind of think about what the Farmers Bank did with the senior citizens center with their lease over there. Could it be kind of a similar deal, we, the city would be responsible for upkeep, repairs, any of that kind of thing, just allow them to use the, us, them to use the land to build a new lodge hall. Uh, that was certainly that the members are appreciative of what we're trying to do, so I, um, I mean, we have a meeting next week, this, this Thursday night? Yeah, so we'll, we'll know for sure, I'm sure we'll get more in depth on the what lodge halls wishes are, but.
Well, I, I guess, Travis, when you, when you talk about that, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of a lease, but I guess, you know, with the lodge, uh, their intentions are to build a building there, you know, and so I was thinking after, uh, if, you know, I said, well, what's that building there, I mean, is that, uh, I guess in essence, I guess if they, you know, say, oh, we don't want to lease money for it, is the building, if they revert back to the city, or? Yeah, that's me, that's what I'm there.
Yeah, so the city would own the land essentially, and releasing the lodge to land. I don't think the intention would be for the lodge to ever exit that lease agreement.
And I, I, I'd really feel that, you know, but just like their current building, they, they never envisioned on, uh, releasing that building, you know, or something, I just thought, in the event of, you know, something happens thirty years from now or whatever, I'm, I'm just kind of thinking, what would happen to that, you know, building there?
Well, that would certainly need to be worked out because there are a number of lodges around the area that are lost membership. All that old members that passed away, they've merged with other lodges, and so some lodge halls have now gone to vote. And it's a good point, if for some reason we have to close and merge with General Inn or wherever, what would happen with the building, would we, would the city still have ownership or could we sell it?
Well, Mr. Brown, uh, you know, if we entered into a hundred year lease, say, uh, we're not allowed money, and build a new building down there, it's certainly gonna be the intent of the lodge to keep that lodge viable and going as long as possible. There's no way to know. If they end at a hundred years, probably come back, ask for an extension, who knows, could I, you know, against, I mean, it is intent of the lodge to maintain that as good as the, oh, my lodge got a little, you know, forever.
I think, and the vibe, I, I'm sorry, you having a new lodge, new lodge, and, and if, hopefully none of these lodges close down, but if you sit in there in a new lodge, then you might be the place that other lodges become to you.
I'm very lucky to be.
And also maybe to help answer your question, Mr. Brown, I believe the county could assess the property and show that the city actually owns the land and the lodge would actually own the building. I think, I think it could be assessed separately, uh, to where the city wouldn't actually own the building.
So, that would be the kid of law. We sure would appreciate you, uh, considering that long-term, not a, not a rent lease for, or third.
Well, I, I think, you know, uh, downtown, not having a Masonic Lodge downtown, you know, would, you know, just be you know, out of the question, you know, because I always enjoy y'all being down here, I look forward to the, you know, the pancake breakfast on the Fourth of July, and I just think that trying to keep y'all downtown is definitely, you know, uh, to both our benefits and stuff, so I certainly would entertain, you know, uh, coming up with a lease agreement with them in that aspect.
So, sounds like, um, you certainly further discuss it, you want, you want, uh, Mr. Plumber to work up a lease agreement for, or, you have, if you're loyal, team's discussion next week with, uh, long term, you might need to.
We need, well, we just need to have some, for example, you know, so. He said, well, we'll pay a hundred year lease for a model amount of money, and we, we go say, here's what the city wants to do. And no, it's not gonna be here a hundred years.
You know, I, I'm, so our, our, our lease agreement, as we mentioned by, I think, Councilman Brown or somebody, is a former bank, on the senior citizens center is about as good as it gets, and if I'm not mistaken, it's a hundred years worth of order a year. And we had, we owe a former bank twenty bucks probably already, so, um, but the Masonic Lodge has been here for a hundred and fifty-eight years, or, you know, I don't, I don't, I personally do not see enough an issue of offering something like that to the, to the masons, I just think it's, after all, we're pretty strict through the middle of it.
Historical societies ran the jellies in for one dollar for a hundred years, so there's more than, more than one thousand.
Okay, just so you know, just to clarify the question about the, uh, the repairs and maintenance of the, we're leasing the building.
Right.
We're not leasing the land, so when they build a building, they're responsible for everything, the building, that's the difference between what we're doing.
So, so they have lane, they have to do.
The only thing I would make sure, and I know this is for further discussion, is, is, and I know, but he's the contractor, he's a contractor, not one who can build the building at all, but obviously, we all work together to make sure that we're, that, that building is just what we want, what we allow and positioning it with the party, I mean, we all know that, so I just thought I'd say that out loud. Your, your lodge may be the judge's quarters for the parade that are here too, so that's where they usually sit, the judge's station, if, uh, pretty much.
We, we can address that just a second.
Sure.
I think Travis, I think what we're basically talking about is an air rights lease, where they lease the right to everything above ground. And, give you an example of one, Marriott Hotel in Little Rock. That property is owned by the city of Little Rock, Marriott Hotel has an air rights lease there. And in that lease, and of course, they paid real money for it, but in the lease, there's agreements of what will happen, what will happen if something dissolves, where the building has to be, so, there's a couple of places, probably do a little research and come up with, again, steal the language from somebody that's already done the work.
Yes, sir.
That is, question Mr. Brown had was, if they build the building, thirty years from now they're abandoned, does the city inherit the problem of this repair of the building, or whose issue would it be, because we own the land?
That's what you put in the contract.
So, if something were to happen.
Can you work out what's mutually agreeable in the contract?
Because as, as Judge Cox said, anything that happened, we don't have a.
Well, I would like to entertain, uh, for our city attorney to, you know, uh, the, the contract for that, Melbrook. The nominal fee of one dollar a year, or, or, you know, it's five dollars or whatever, you know, there's some nominal fee that, uh, just all of this binding, uh, agreement. And, you know, using the, uh, the air lease, uh, example that, uh, Mr. Purvis has mentioned, and they bring it back to us, you know, and would that be an agreement for, for something that the masons could live with? So, if we, sounds good. I, so if we come up with a, a, a good lease agreement, you know, that say that y'all are gonna get the property for about, yeah, the next hundred years, or, you know, five dollars a year, or whatever, that would be all right?
Are you still embarrassed, or we gotta have a member? I think, I hope you're a, a lover here.
You, you've never.
Hundred years look like you have for us.
If it's a hundred dollars, you know, that would count.
If it's quite, if I accept, it'd be a good idea.
I think we're on the right track.
We'll still find what works with the papers.
There you go. Side note, if I may, I'm not gonna divulge any information, and we had a meeting the other day, but the, the meeting with RDOT, with Director Tudor, was amazing, and I think, and I, I saw all, all three of you gentlemen's jaws drop when she, was, was.
We've had a great director of RDOT.
Yes, we did, yes, we did. Her own peoples, her own folks' jaws dropped, but, and so, out in the hallway, she, I, I was thanking her for the meeting and hoping it didn't, you know, dampen anything, and she said, did you see what I just said? So, it was pretty amazing, uh, congratulations to the lodge on that, on that deal too, so. I think, uh, if that sounded good, we need a motion or, or a vote on that, or just, we're, we're, we're doing the same.
We're, we're busy, yeah, okay. We're just thinking we vote on the, uh, contract.
We'll get that right in about a couple of weeks, we could get a vote on it.
You know how terms are, sir.
Yeah, I, I have one, it's a free one.
I mean, if y'all want to see the actual contract that y'all could vote on, I, I guess it'd really be a month, you know, for it to be presented to council.
Well, we just go by, I mean, we, we just gotta have.
Something presented.
Here's something, here's something we've worked with.
Okay, okay, sounds great. Uh, all right, we'll move on to number nine, uh, well, Councilman McDaniel was not here tonight, so that will be tabled, or? Something, I don't know.
I'm, I'm prepared to speak on, on behalf of the, or you want to table it?
Mr. Brown's prepared to speak on that, yeah.
Your honor.
Yes, sir, thank you, gentlemen, for coming here.
Gave me a million dollars alone.
I see, man.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Raymar?
Yes.
I love the logic that you start to sell, you know?
Did he hear it? Somebody get his attention. Number ten is repeal and replace ordinance nineteen dash oh six, uh, Mr. Michael. Next time, Tim will break up. Go.
Gentlemen, I believe y'all have it in your packets, the ordinance nineteen oh six, it has any blasting ordinance that's currently in effect. There were some unintended consequences of the language that we put in this ordinance, you can believe that. Specifically, in the nineteen oh six, section six A, prohibits blasting within a thousand feet of basically any structure defined. And, um, I think the copy you have has it stricken out, uh, I'm proposing that we just replace that language with, uh, code of federal regulations language, and, uh, I have it up here, I'll read it for you. If I had a little bit more time, I would have put it in there for you, but I did not, so I apologize. It states, except where lesser distances are approved by the regulatory authority based upon a pre-blasting survey or other appropriate investigations, blasting shall not be conducted within, that's where you get your distances, a thousand feet from any other structures. All that allows is that allows a, a regulatory authority in the city to, uh, allow blasting within a thousand feet radius, as long as they've conducted their research beforehand. Uh, so what we have right now is we've got some property out on the corner of Highway seventy-one and Highway ten. It was purchased to provide rock for new, uh, hydro bypass. And currently they need to blast to get the rock out, and they are not able to. So, we are, in a way, holding up the bypass with our own ordinance. It is more strict, more stringent than federal regulations.
I have to try to watch out.
Yep.
Could any of their blasting hurt the city's senior citizen property?
So, they're, they're, go ahead.
So, they did a pre-blast survey, and that's part of the federal regulations, they have to do that everywhere, all inside, and review everything, and submit all these documents to these individuals. I have the, the people here that are responsible for that, uh, in the audience today, if they would like to speak on their processes, because I am ignorant to those processes. But, I'm just presently get the ordinance changed with emergency clause, with whatever language is acceptable that allows them to proceed forward so we don't hinder progress.
So, the federal regulations don't specifically give a distance, they just?
I can provide you this, I did not make copies. It was highlighted there. We're also experiencing some issues at the, uh, Big Rock in town, otherwise known as Bell Park. Uh, we've got some water lines that are going in, we've got some, uh, construction work going on for the splash pad, and, and, well, they've hit, they've hit rock, and a lot of it. And it would be beneficial for them to be able to utilize these techniques, uh, have that in their arsenal as well.
So, you got blasting?
I have no idea, I don't think there's any blasting proposed at the moment at Bell Park, uh, like I said, that would be handy to have in our arsenal to be able to utilize, but the proper research done beforehand and allowed by us.
I mean, these companies are insured, bonded, though.
Yeah, our ordinance does require that, that they have a million dollar liability insurance per claim.
To answer Charles' question about the senior citizens center validation. Early in this calendar.
June, would y'all like to speak on your processes and how volatile it is or isn't?
Sure, um, Jared Reide, uh, owner of Dyke Unblasting, we're a specialty rock drilling blasting contractor, we work all over the country and doing a ton of work in Northwest Arkansas, so, first, blasting in Arkansas is regulated by the Department of Labor, so each and everybody that blasted in the state has to have a license from, from that department. And then, every city, town has their own ordinances, we do a lot of stuff in Fayetteville, a lot of the stuff in Northwest Arkansas, and there's not a single blasting job we do that we are further than a thousand feet. We shot for the, um, library years ago for the city of Fayetteville, we had houses within a hundred feet. Um, we did some work at the University of Arkansas, the South Quad Park and Deck, we shot forty foot cuts, forty feet away from an apartment complex, right across the street from the physics lab, so. Uh, blasting is a highly regulated industry these days, it is not bodily coyote setting off the dynamite. We do do pre-blast surveys, we hire a third-party company to come in, document the exist, pre-existing conditions of any structures. We have seismographs, there are certain limits of ground vibration and air blast that we have to stay under, so, we set those seismographs up and each blast is monitored, there's a blasting report, which is a legal document that we have to keep, so, this site, we've got about twelve feet of sandstone that needs to be blasted, that will be loaded and hauled for the new bypass, so.
And it's a, that's a, a, uh, oh, an ingredient, it's a rock that you blasted before, nothing that odd, special, out of the ordinary, basic.
It's the sandstone that's around here.
And there's no potential for lime debris anywhere, right, it's all, any?
Yeah, these are not like a quarry blast where the, the goal is to, you know, obliterate it so it can fall through the crusher, so. We design our blasts for, for several things, vibration, air blast, and then fly rock. So, we design a blast just like, um, so I know how many, I know how many miles. So we design a blast just like, so I know how many, I know how many miles I can go on a gallon of diesel in my truck, and I know how much one pound of explosive, how much work one pound of explosives do. So we design the blast based on how much rock each hole is moving, how much stemming we hold, which helps the vertical lift, so, you know, we'll have traffic control out there, stopping traffic, which is a big thing, we do a lot of road projects, we're literally trimming the sides of the highway right next to the traffic, so, you know, people won't be around, we have a warning process that we go through, air horns, obviously, there's a few residences that are close that we've already been in communication with, there's a storage place right across the street, so it's not the tightest site we've ever worked in, for sure, so there's really nothing to the north or west, other than just highways, so...
Well, all your fingers are looks like, so that's possible.
Yeah.
Don't have an employee in void breath, do you?
Heard that name, heard, heard lots of stories. Yeah.
He did make some two's recently.
Could you, the thing that you're referencing, did you add that to this, just so, you know, so that, you know, later on, when we do look at this ordinance, we'll know what you're referring to?
The regulations.
Yeah.
You're gonna replace it into A, or you're gonna make a whole new A?
Yeah, so my intentions worth taking, the section that I've highlighted in this document exactly replaced what I have stricken out, I just did not have a chance to get it put in there. I can circulate this document, if y'all would like to review it?
So that, that highlighted, also said a thousand feet, though, right?
It does, but it allows the regulatory authority to approve blasting within a thousand feet, as long as they've done their research and they've done a pre-blasting survey.
So I'd like a motion to put this off before it's reading, with... With just, just one second, and I've got, and this may have already been in there, on page three, you know, section eight, item E, is that a one thousand percent, have you always been there? That's, I'm not seeing.
Yeah.
Where are you at, Charlie?
Page three.
Section eight, item E, says we had a thousand percent penalty.
It was in the old one.
In the old one?
In the existing one.
Yeah. So that'd be the fifty, would be fifty thousand if they're in violation.
No, because the fifty is just a perfect fee.
Because I'm thinking, this is, this is just a penalty against a, a person hauling, right? I mean, not really necessarily somebody just, you know, blowing up something, this is the hauling, or I don't know.
That, that section just pertains to the heavy hauling of the material offsite, leaving site and offsite.
Well, seeing as, as my understanding is it, is this a thousand times that fifty dollars, whatever, that's realtor.
The fee is fifty, it says if they commence work without getting that fee, they're subject to a thousand percent of that fee, yes.
In addition to the basic fee. So, I see, no, that's a typo, if that was always there?
It said it, it was there.
It seems excessive, but, I mean, they've already got their heavy haul permit, so they don't have to worry about that.
It's just a hefty fine if you don't, no, you know, if those...
That's just, that's what I thought, I know, it's a hundred percent instead of a thousand.
Both of our penalties are under excessive, if you break the law, right? If you sign...
Originally, Canada brought back in, when I was on council, twenty years ago, because they, when they done Maple Ridge, they just wanted to blast, and they didn't realize they supposed to come down here and have, and think it was a blast, and they backed out all this, and then this was like, I feel that.
That covers her slate.
And you, you made the motion to put an order for a reading with...
With those edits, but...
Replacing that highlight of, yeah, with the section 6A. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
unanimous, an ordinance refilling, ordinance number 19 dash zero six, providing standards for possession, storage, transporting, handling, and use of explosive material, establishing certain conditions relative to detonation of explosive material, declaring emergency or for other purposes.
I'd like a motion to suspend the rules, wait second, third reading.
Second. Motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
unanimous?
Motion to adopt.
Second. Motion second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
unanimous?
I'd like a motion to, emergency clause, second. Motion second to deny the emergency clause.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
unanimous?
I do have a request, I have a request, you mentioned, you mentioned the coyote earlier, do you actually have any for this?
Not anymore.
He just sent one off, I mean, he said okay.
Yeah, oh, I thought I heard something.
Oh, Facebook's gonna be, what's that noise?
Oh, yeah.
Who's that, who's that boogers chatting?
Thanks, Jim, thank you, Mr. Rocker. Uh, number eleven is about to begin.
We're a little battery moving tonight, didn't we?
Budget number, we're gonna say, Jerry?
Good save.
Yeah? We've got a long one.
Oleary projects, uh, this is about the structure, directed south for store craft. They're a rock house, and it's got two arms on site, they're kind of dilapidated, not safe, we've got kids that have been in there, for beings, and just doing things they shouldn't be doing now.
Were you one of those kids?
I was, yeah.
Okay.
So, I've had a couple of individuals approach me, and they've been wanting to demolish the property, I've talked with our city attorney, I believe that we have the ability to proceed forward. This was intended to be more of a discussion, and if it worked out great, then we could put in the budget if needed. I just kinda wanted to know y'all's thoughts on tearing down that property.
So, adopt the whole factor, it's the person who owns store craft, that's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Steve Lewis.
I've got three verbal quotes, I don't have any hand, hand juke, they range anywhere from ten thousand dollars to eighteen thousand dollars. One of those was disposed of properly, one of them was disposed of, I can only assume somewhere relatively close to our location.
Now, I'll give you one of those, I'll figure it out.
I think we, the mayor has signed an order and proclamation declaring that those properties are unsafe and unsanitary, are our ordinance. So, on the big building, we've got upkeep invoices that are not paid for mowing, and is that about it?
No, I don't know, we, we put employee labor out there, putting chains and locks on doors and entrances and...
So I think, correct if I'm wrong, but I think the plan on that is to enforce our lien that we would have by virtue of those invoices that were made unpaid, I think that's the plan on moving forward on, on that, but they're two separate parts. Now, I don't think we ever mowed the house.
Yeah, we have.
Oh, we have, yeah.
Yes.
Well...
That's awesome.
Well, I think the plan for that is to do the demolition.
Yeah.
But the property owner hasn't notified on all properties.
Significant time to you, I don't know, what, six months hearing, longer?
Yeah, at least.
Correct. That's right. So I've got a low responsible quote of roughly fourteen thousand dollars, and that will leave the concrete slabs in place, that gets all the structures removed, and all the physical safety hazards taken care of and paid.
Ultimately, the issue is demolition of that big facility would be an undertaking the city probably doesn't want to take on, but the house isn't as big of a deal.
It's a nice big site. Big, ten feet?
Well, we've never, I mean, so how, there's no timeline of, of, we can say we have to be reimbursed by next day, just a court case, or, I mean, we spent fourteen grand demolishing this thing, and we send them a bill, and just, we never get paid.
Well, by virtue of the mayor's order, the city has a lien on the property, and it's about, out of research, you don't have to file a lien, it's not a paper lien, it's just by the very nature of them owning the city money and being notified of such, along with the mayor declaring it unattractive and unsafe and unsanitary, so now it just becomes a matter of how we want to enforce those liens.
But I mean, I guess, I just wasn't hearing, Tim saying, is if they, if we did, you know, paid care down there, like that, could that be a judgment on to that bill?
Yes, we have lien for any cost that we have in maintaining, cleaning, rectifying the, about here, or abating the problem, whether that be demolition or...
Mr. Brown, is your question related more to if we tear that structure down, the house, that if it paid in the larger building?
Well, no, I think that would just indicate that, you know, we, we need business, you know, and so, I don't know, whatever, I mean, if we would tear down that big building, because of just the expense of doing that, but, no, I was just saying that if we could add that on to, you know, to the property, if it ever got sold.
Yeah, and after we tear it down, we're still gonna have maintenance there, because they're gonna have to go back and, and mow, night to night, because, you know, we've had it bush-holed several times and all that, but even after we tear it down, we're gonna have a continuing maintenance issue with that.
Right, I guess that's all I was saying, if, if the fourteen thousand, or whatever you say, could be added to that.
It might end up like the property on Main Street, it might end up hours, you know. So, what the process looks like, I think this might answer your question, so we've, we've entered the order and proclamation, it's filed with record, there was no response to that, so that gives the mayor the green light to decide how he wants to deal with the nuisance, so if he decides to hire out the demolition, then yes, that could be recouped when the city enforces his lien, which would obviously be after the demolition, so the city can get his money back in that, or, in the case of the bigger building, just for the mowing, we can enforce on that as well.
And food for thought, while this discussion began, I think it's important to mention, there is a local businessman who has been very, shown much interest in this big building. He's waiting for something to happen one way or the other, he's actually been in contact, I put him in contact with Mr. Lewis of California, it's been a year, two years ago, and they had a discussion, it didn't end well, it didn't help anything. So, Mr. Lewis, in the past, has been in favor of renting, leasing the building out, and he's been in favor of selling it, and then he's been in favor of doing nothing, and so he, he actually has put some money in the building in the last ten years, I guess, I don't know, with some, but if you walked in there today, and I've been in there not recent, but long enough to know, or recent enough to know, it's, it was all for naught, because it's vandalized, it's, there is absolutely no telling what's going on in that big building.
There's one piece of glass that is not...
Yeah, one piece of glass left, and so, I, I just wanna say that because I'm anxious to see with Mr. Plummer's assistance and what we can do about getting that, and there may be that, and the gentleman I was speaking of is in the building, and he sees potential, I don't know how, to be honest with you, but, and it may not be all, it's huge, and it's added on over the years, it's been there a hundred years, a long time, so there is somebody waiting in, in the wings, if you will, which would be awesome if that building was occupied and had fifty or seventy employees in it, as it did in the past.
And we've missed out on viable companies coming in, leasing it, and he won't...
Three or four different companies have come in, I even had the police department escorted into town a few years ago to make a big show, and they look at it and they go, you know, don't think so, with the price, so I'm anxious to get to a point where either we're in control of that, or, and get somebody in it that's gonna help us economically, or get rid of it, and get something there that is gonna help us economically, so...
Well, I mean, I experienced that, just, as my neighbor to me on the town square, you know, for quite a few years, you know, it went vacant, and it was just being, you know, being dilapidated and stuff, and the owner didn't wanna do anything with it and stuff, and then finally, when we did, you know, get action forced upon him or whatever, and get a forced sale, massive, it's a fantastic building.
It's beautiful, yeah.
Yeah, so, do, Tom, do we, can we make a resolution, saying, do we add it to the planning department's budget, or like that?
Well, it'll go somewhere, but I don't have a dollar now, so, he gives me a number or an asset?
I, I've got, it's a text quote, it's not, it's not anything official, but it's thirteen thousand five hundred, was his quote.
Can I, can we make a re- resolution up to fifteen thousand, you know, to tear down the building?
I'm good with that. I'm gonna win you over a chunk of it.
There you go. I'd make a resolution to, you know, add to the planning budget fifteen, fifteen thousand, or up to fifteen thousand dollars for the demolition of the block building, if you're making a motion to, to create a resolution to do such. Yeah, I make a resolution.
You want it to go to planning, or you want it to go to general?
It should probably go to general, that's just my opinion, because...
Those are the benefits, it's more...
Yeah, it's a, it's a, oh, yeah.
Code enforcement is technically in the mayor's office, I've just been conspirating a long time now.
General it is.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's not stipulate planning.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
And Duncan?
Second.
Second. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
unanimous?
Any gentlemen?
Very good, thank you, Mr. Michael. That is the end of the agenda, as far as items, you know, we have appropriate reports and questions from council, there are several here, actually.
And you want to be up there and do a thing or something?
I did, but I'm not gonna ask him to do it or not.
Yes.
Yes, sir. You're not counsel or, I'm kidding.
I'm not on counsel or, or anything, I just, I wanted to be here tonight to thank the city council from the time that East Village was started. Greenwood was chosen to have the showcase home built in East Village this year. Last year was in Chatty Crossing, and it was over nine thousand people went through the house, two weekends in one week. So we've been chosen to build it, I have the privilege of building it, and today, we hosted the largest crowd of people at a groundbreaking for a showcase home in twenty years.
It's because you had those cookies.
What he didn't tell you is Buddy doesn't make any money off of doing it.
That's right.
This is for the Home Builders Association, but they've honored Buddy by choosing him to be the founder.
That's a big deal. What is it, Mr. Reynolds?
I'm, I'm wanting to do a praise like we do in the Sunday School in the mornings, give a praise, but I wanna thank the council for the forward-looking, as far as the lots on Main Street, that they are now, wanna lease over to the Masons, because if it hadn't been for that, we wouldn't have had a place for them to go, and that's gonna be a really nice place, and the pancakes are both gonna be closer to my office now, so thank all of you for the foresight that you have.
Awesome. So, council, department reports, questions from council, anything for the department is?
I do have one thing on that night.
Yes, sir.
I wanna invite the council, April the third, which y'all know, we've got a eclipse coming up, y'all don't have a date, on the third, we're gonna have a lunch meeting, a little bit, at eleven thirty, we're having astronomer come to town, talk about what's cool about an eclipse, and then we're also gonna have the Director of Emergency Management come and talk about how we need to be preparing as businesses and as citizens for it, and we'll be giving you guys some more information at next month's meeting, we're right at it, we've got one more emergency meeting to go, because there's a lot of stuff we've gotta think about, Stuart's been thinking about it, Chief's been thinking about it, Trey's been thinking about it, businesses need to be... Because there's a lot of stuff we've gotta think about, Stuart's been thinking about it, Chief, Chief's been thinking about it, Street's been thinking about it, businesses need to be thinking about preparing for this day. So, we'll get more to you, but I wanted to know about the meeting coming up on third.
Maybe into that, I've said it, is, is you have several meetings, uh, from little bitty meetings of our own, to big meetings at the county, and I've been hearing, and no matter what you think about it, city attorney keeps whispering, it's gonna rain in the mine, so if it does, it, it won't be a big deal, but if it doesn't, and it happens, I know it's just two minutes for us, or two point something, uh, it can be major issues, major issues, the traffic can air everything, so, uh, it's, it's hard to believe for me a little bit, but I, I believe them, because they've got, they've got these numbers from twenty seventeen, uh, from the other side of the country when it happened, and it was not, there was issues, so we need to be prepared, that's a little. Anything else for, any, well, any department head, anybody? Uh, Street was not being able to be here tonight, uh, should mention this about Jeff Turner's dad.
Well, I, we don't know all the information.
All I know is he's in the hospital.
I'm not really even sure on that.
Wow, okay, well, never mind.
Self is for.
Yes.
Just pray for Jeff Turner's dad.
Pray for Jeff Turner's dad, and again, for Kristen's, for sure, uh, so, there's that. So if not anything there, we'll go to council forum. I, I just wanna say that, you know, for those that, that missed, uh, Friday's morning, you know, uh, this dedication, you know, to the, you know, highway bypass, shoe lot, or, or, uh, in Greenwood, it was, uh, just really, uh, to me, just not a, a awe-inspiring moment, but a very inspiring, you know, just saying that, that to hear Congressman, you know, Lomack, and Johnson, and Stowe Field, you know, talking about the, the places of Greenwood, and also the, I think of the lady commissioner, uh, Mardock, the director. Director, right, director. But, you know, I mean, just to, to, to hear the things that they said, you know, to, you know, brag about, about Greenwood and everything, you know, commits us really, uh, a hallmark time for us, for Greenwood. And they are not messing around, in case you haven't noticed. They're building.
It's a big home deal.
It's a big home. Thank you very much.
I have a memo on the council's packet, are they gonna?
Oh, sorry, yes, you have a memo over there, or your voice, I don't have it.
I'll put it on the, on the desk for you.
Oh, you, I'm sorry.
Put it down there.
I make a motion to be approved of the invoice. Second. Do I have a second? Yes.
Before you vote, I have to ask this council, because I have that copy of the ordinance to it. It highlighted, it says the full compensation for all advisory services, draft, drafting ordinances, contracts, and other documents. And it appears that's what the symbol is for. I'm just asking the council, why, why is that different, Brown, what's what it says here?
Do you think we need to make a resolution, not just approve it, we need to make, say we need to pass a resolution at this point?
I think she said the ordinance we have that pertains to the city attorney's duties are in states that is sour, I assume, is already going towards what he's building, like, is that true?
Yes. I just wanted to ask that question.
Comments, discussion? I'll be honest, and say this is the first time I've seen this bill, um, I won't do the billing at the office. But I, I, I think that, um, I don't, I don't think it was intentional that that second item got put on there, because I don't, I would agree that that, that would be tracking.
Because you do the ordinances, right, I mean, as part of your, unless it's for bodies, you could apparently, for the ordinance.
Well, I'm preparing to present a revised city attorney ordinance later on, so we're writing down everything that we do, and I think that was probably just a accidental move, if I was, if I was being a hundred percent honest, uh, we're, we're keeping track of everything that we do, so I can show that to everyone a few months down the road, and, uh, because I think last time we had that discussion, that would've been helpful if I'd had something like that, but after a few months have gone by, I'll be able to show, um, so, yeah, let's, let's just pass that, if you guys aren't, aren't good with that. And I'll just redo it next month.
You're talking about just tabled this invoice, or?
It's up to you guys, I don't, I don't think that the bottom item should be on there.
So, we can pay it to a strike in the eighty seven fifty?
If that's what the council, um, would like to do, I, it's, it's up to you guys.
Was the meeting with White Water Commission advisory, or some other?
Look at it, Teresa.
Or you can just pass it off.
I, I kinda look at that as an extra ordinary for a water commission.
It's, well, it was, we needed his.
Study session, oh, you got it, Ben.
It was what?
Is this, are we talking about the meeting that we had?
Yeah.
The other day?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was an advisory meeting, we had a problem that we had to have him check it out.
So, what's the desire, council? I'm, I'm with him, I was, yeah, I'm gonna just knock off the, uh, the draft annexation, so, yeah, I just say ordinance. And just, uh, make it the two sixty two fifty. Council? Motion? Anything about it?
Well, I know you're all talking a lot about it at the, I guess, the, now that we passed the budget, there, there was discussion about how you wanted them, you wanted an update on that. So I guess that's what he's doing, let's keep it tracking it.
Yeah, we're writing down everything that we do at the office, and we, all the emails and phone calls that I make, just so I can illustrate to you guys the time and effort that I'm putting into my job. I'm being, you know, me just, uh, possibly dealing with, uh, somebody like the owner of a store craft, or whatever, you know, sometimes they can be, you know, calls going back and forth, that can be, uh, pretty. Well, I think I've, I've not ever heard from a bunch of them, too. So anyway, that's my, I, I make a resolution, I'm gonna do the, uh, two sixty two fifty, or.
You're remitting your motion?
Yeah, I made my motion to just approve the two sixty two fifty. I'll be my second. Motion second, amended.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, if there's not anything further, I wanna thank everybody for being here tonight, and sticking it out, it's amazing that you did that, it's, uh, ten oh three, hey, we've got another hour to go. Thank you all for being here tonight, I would just say a motion to adjourn.